Great, we are live, we are live streaming, so I will call us to order. Marblehead's committee, June 5th, 6:02 PM. Welcome, everybody, welcome. So, let me join you. Okay, let's start with the placement, please. You know, space.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the great public, which is a nice, one nation.
Next, have a commendation, right, commendation?
I'm telling you, absolutely. Yeah, well, I don't want to go first.
Well, are you there?
I wanted to commend two, two commendations. But Derek Haplovich, I'd like to commend for his professionalism in work, especially throughout the senior, senior days and getting all the senior activities and everything up and running. I know he's been working really hard, I know there's a team of folks, but he's taken a whole lot of thorns, I just want to recognize that. And then the second commendation is, we, Chair Schaffner received a letter from the ADL, and I thought it was worth sharing that ADL recognized.
I was gonna be there, you're gonna be there.
You can, you can.
I was going to try to respond.
Okay, so I will just, I just want to commend the committee for their work on the antisemitism proclamation. And as you said, you'll talk about the ADL's letter.
Okay, I just wanted to, I did want to make mention of the passing recently of a longtime teacher here in Marblehead, Mr. Dave Fleming. Served at Robin Junior High School. And as a social studies teacher, he had, here in the district, I was a student of Mr. Fleming many years ago. Loved him, teacher, also longtime friend, for many, many years, he and some other teachers ran out to mini course and got this, like, campers' child of Marblehead to go camping in the, in Fred Cody and the watch up in New Hampshire. It was a very, very popular, many, many years popular mini course, and really got killed students outside into the level miniature. I remember he carried that with him, and his struggle with it too. So I didn't see that recently, that announcement that he had cast, I just wanted to tell them. And he was very, very beloved. Our condolences. All right, let's, then, let's see. I want to go on to public comments. If we're up, yes. Oh, thanks. Anyone online, on Zoom, would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. I'll start with the folks here in the room, and then move to online. I have Kristen, is a bank. Hi, Kristen, welcome. Do you mind, yes, if I might, might coming up, come see here. And we'll see you and hear you here, and they will see you when you want, yeah. Yeah, it was extremely, welcome.
Thank you. All right, hello, members of the school community. I'm here to express my deep gratitude to those of you who stood up against allowing antisemitic imagery to become part of our Marblehead school curriculum. Though I'm not Jewish, I was horrified by images such as a dollar bill folded in the shape of a star of David, a poster reading Zionists F off, and a book claiming that small children describe anxiety as a group of bullies for among the materials being considered for use in mass, sorry, in Massachusetts classrooms. These items are not educational tools. They're divisive, offensive, harmful, and risk perpetuating dangerous series of things. I feel strongly that when something is so clearly wrong and targets members of our community in such a hurtful way, we all have a responsibility to speak up, especially in defense of children in our classrooms. We will feel marginalized by the use of such images. My children have attended Marblehead Public Schools since kindergarten and are just completing eighth grade. Over the years, I have been consistently impressed with the kindness, care, and compassion of their teachers. Let me be clear, this is not a question of whether our Marblehead teachers would have chosen to use such materials themselves, but rather an expression of gratitude that members of our school committee took decisive action for sure that no students in our district would risk being exposed to them at all. We cannot expect students to fully understand the painful and complex history behind these kinds of images when presented in a classroom without the necessary care and context. And more importantly, we should never put any student in a position where they feel targeted, isolated, or unsafe, especially not in a space that should be dedicated to their growth and motivation. Thank you to Jen Schaffner, Allison Taylor, and Sarah Fox for having the courage to say no. This is not acceptable in our schools. Your decision was one of safety, inclusivity, and mutual respect. Thoughts that are essential to the kind of learning environment every child deserves. Thank you for what you did, and thank you for your time today.
And it's very, 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 very. It is safe. If we were. Karen Tell-Malcolm. Welcome, Karen.
Dear school committee members, I would like to personally thank Jen Schaffner, Sarah Fox, and Allison Taylor for voting for this proclamation that will protect our district from the MTA's antisemitic curriculum resources. In addition to other proactive stats that have played in address the community of concerns, including an investigation through follow, the Brookline School Committee agreed and saw the benefit of having such a proclamation in Marblehead. Marblehead is now only the second doocy in the states to issue such a proclamation, and you and the Brookline School Committee are leading by example. This is what engaged school committee members should be doing to address antisemitism in their districts. Thank you for listening to your support. I have a letter that I'm submitting, but as over sixty signatures collected from community members bearing the ritual for Sarah Milgram and Jerome Meschon's seat, the two murdered Israeli staffers who were targeted at a Jewish event. I only wish the proclamation had passed five oh, like in Brookline, and not three two. It has become blatantly apparent that antisemitism is held for different standards from other forms of hatred. School committee members Brian Oda and Al Williams were the first boys opposition for proclamation condemning anti-black racism following the murder of George Floyd. While in the post-October 7th world, when Jewish students are trapped on college campuses, Jews are being targeted and murdered illegally, Jews are being set on fire in Boulder, Colorado, that this proclamation would be challenged by board members and publicly condemned by the NEA. It makes no sense. I want to address the NEA's claim that this proclamation was unnecessary because they had already issued a statement. That statement posted in January 2024 created a false moral equivalence by lumping antisemitism in with other forms of hatred and failed to acknowledge that Jews are actively being targeted. No word did the statement condemn the MTA's curriculum as antisemitic. By avoiding that language, the statement was sanitized, avoided calling out the MTA's curriculum materials specifically for their antisemitic content. At the last school committee meeting, the NEA claimed that antisemitic materials have been removed from the MTA website. That is false, and there are still antisemitic resources on the website, so why make that claim? You're right, there is a political agenda, but it's coming from the NEA, not the school committee. Having a personal grievance with school committees over your contract negotiations and legal strike is not giving you the right for just many years for your political agenda. This is a clear case of projection onto the school committee from the NEA. When the NEA collectively changed elected officials for addressing the legitimate concerns of their constituents, it sends a chilling message to other leaders. Don't speak up for Jews. That is not leadership, and it was not behavior defending those who claim children to be upstanders. Jews in America are being targeted, murdered, and even set on fire. I will not accept efforts to silence and shame those standing in solidarity with the Jewish community. To Jen, Allison, and Sarah, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for your courage and moral clarity. Did what was right, and Marblehead is stronger, safer because of it, so thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Sarah Pladian. Welcome.
I'm gonna say, please, that's summer start, but I'll say one.
Oh, you shouldn't have to press.
Not that. Um. My name is Sarah Pladian, and I am the mother of two kids, one in our district and one at Charter. A mother and individual who has watched her kids confronted with antisemitism in our schools and at our home in the past twenty months, six since October 7th. I am here tonight for a few reasons. On May 1st, Brookline School Committee voted unanimously to approve the proclamation regarding the Massachusetts Teachers Association's curriculum resource materials on Israel-Gaza conflict. On May 5th, the Marblehead School Committee voted, maybe it was May 11th. The Marblehead School Committee voted to approve the same proclamation. But surprisingly or not surprisingly, only three of our members voted to approve this simple proclamation. As you know, Sarah Fox, Allison Taylor, and Jen Schaffner are the three members. For a moment, I was happy, but when I drove home, I felt ill known that two of our members did not feel compelled to approve the simple proclamation. A few days later, I wrote an email to the committee and asked for a meeting with Al Williams and Brian Oda. Al responded and met with me. Thank you. I asked Al what his reasons were to not approve this proclamation, and he admitted that he was stuck on one line of the proclamation and felt that one line was interpreted as the committee would have the right to change the curriculum. He did say that he should have looked at the whole picture and not gotten stuck on one line. So I reviewed the proclamation multiple times to see where that line could have possibly been and could not find it. My point here today is to say that this proclamation should have been a unanimous vote. Our Jewish students and parents should not have to worry that our classrooms are being filled with hateful antisemitic propaganda that the Massachusetts Teachers Association has provided. This is a no-brainer. I have heard others in our community state this propaganda is only there to provide context and information on how to teach if they want to. Some called it art. How does one applying use of art? Would anyone in our community feel the same if the MTA showed an African American being lynched or an LGBTQ individual plus individual being thrown off a building as it so happens in Gaza? The answer is simple, it would never happen. It would have been condemned immediately, and it would for sure not be called art. I want to make it very clear tonight that some of us and all of you should know that the MTA is searing down the path of indoctrinating all of the communities. I want to tell you that the Jewish community and our allies will not allow it. Do not come after our children or teachers. It is simple, this community and the NEA should condemn the MTA for their antisemitism and their incitement of violence through their website and curriculum. I will finish by saying this, my family thanks the three committee members who have stood by the Jewish community without wavering. I feel seen, and it is comforting to know that they have the moral clarity that is needed to do the right thing by our community and educators to the other members. I really hope that you find your moral clarity and the strength to stand up for your Jewish community, and I hope that in the future you can educate yourself against antisemitism. Thank you again for passing this proclamation and for your support. We are forever grateful.
Thank you, sorry. I have one hand online, it's Carl Goodman. We should be able to.
Okay, can you hear me?
Unleash yourself, Mr. Goodman.
Hi, my name is Carl Goodman. I've only lived in Marblehead for sixty years. I'm sorry, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
There we go, now we can hear you now.
Okay, so, my name is Carl Goodman, I've only lived in Marblehead for sixty years. I graduated from Marblehead High School. I served as an elected official in Marblehead for twenty-five years, serving as chairman of the Board of Health for most of that time, and two terms as selectman. Since June 7th of 2024, we've had an opportunity to see who our real friends were, and we've got to see the true colors of people, many of whom we thought were friends and people of moral clarity. Some of us recognize the growing threat over a long period of time, locally, nationally and internationally. But after October 7th, people were real clear about where they stood. Of course, there were those who just stood on the sidelines and didn't want to be counted, but we know what that means. We mean, we know that that means if they were in Nazi Germany, they would have walked by the Zee Kyles. They wouldn't have stopped, they wouldn't have ever challenged it. I was gratified by the votes of three members of the school committee in approving the resolution. I have believed my whole life that in the battle of good and evil, one can only choose one side. And so, to those members who voted in favor of the resolution, thank you. Thank you for your votes, and thank you for your moral clarity. And to the members who voted against it, whatever your true intentions or actual beliefs, your votes are indelibly noted. Thank you.
Can I have Jonathan Hill?
Jonathan Hill, 26, is out broken. May was mental health awareness month. Time, focus, and emotion will bleed, especially for our students. This year, that message feels especially important. About a month ago, fourteen old boys from Piggins Middle School, they died by suicide. His family said that poorly implemented legal law, this is heartbreaking. It should serve as a wake-up call. We need to take heart and breath about how we are supporting students in mental health. The tragedy is home for me in a very personal way. I grew up in Cleveland. I spent the first twelve years of my career teaching with Cleveland Public Schools. I speak to you tonight not as a nineteen-year educator in the Marblehead Public Schools, but also as a parent of two Marblehead students. I care deeply about the students in our schools, and I know firsthand how important it is to invest in their emotional and mental health. The CDC reports that nearly one in five children struggles with a mental, emotional, or behavioral disorder. Yet only about twenty percent of those children receive care from a mental health provider. Rates of anxiety and depression and suicidal thoughts are rising among school-aged kids. These are not distant statistics. We are saving and petting right here in Marblehead and in our neighboring communities. Our guidance council is working incredibly hard, but their case loads are overwhelming. The student council ratios in our schools are too high for counselors to do their jobs effectively, especially when they're also being pulled away for non-counseling duties like lunch duty or classroom coverage when we are short in substitutes. This means less time for one-on-one support in small groups that students desperately need. We also have school psychologists, but their time is mostly devoted to supporting special education students responding to crisis. They are not available to all students. What we are missing is a layer of supportive treatment. A trained professional who provides day-to-day help with emotional and social challenges. What we need are so, school social workers. Prevention is key. With the addition of social workers, school counselors could play a larger role by co-teaching lessons with classroom teachers focused on building empathy, addressing bullying behaviors, and teaching social emotional skills. These kinds of programs, in addition to our Wayfinder SEL program, can help reduce bullying before it starts to create a safer, more supportive school environment. Social workers are equipped to work directly with students and families in issues like trauma, stress, and relationships. They help prevent problems before they escalate, and they make sure no student feels invisible. I respectfully ask the committee to make a formal proclamation in support of the mental health that you all bring to our students. I urge you to make student mental health a top priority and to work collaboratively with administrators, educators, families, and community members to build a strong, sustainable system of support. Let Marblehead Public Schools set the standard for what comprehensive mental health care in schools should look like. I also ask you to believe me and reach out to other school committees, both on the North Shore and across the Commonwealth, to build a unified voice and advocate together for the local and state resources our students urgently need and deserve. Let's not wait for another tragedy to remind us all of what is at stake. Let us act now.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Holes.
Can I just request, or intended, when you have to see it up your report today, but then at some point, given the committee a report, I may properly staff for, for the request that was, this was something that you've seen, or last week during the presentation, but just to update us.
All right.
Um, that's all I've had, so I guess, do you want to speak? Oh, well. And then if there's anybody else, I don't really have anything to give them. But yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you so much, I just need to look tennis sand with, downstairs, my son. Um, thank you. As you know, I speak here a lot, yeah, again, somewhere short dry, I speak here a lot about the fight against antisemitism. And I want to express my deepest gratitude to the board, specifically to Jen, Sarah, and Allison, for having that proclamation and supporting it. I think it was two weeks ago. I've been watching what the MTA has been trying to bring into the streets. It is terrific for everyone, it is antisemitic for everyone. It is an active curriculum, and it will only gain more weight, more antisemitism, and it will not teach our students the right history or the right, the right way of healing Israel, healing Jewish people, of doing the conflict between the Jews and the Arabs. I was saddened that it was a three or two vote and not a five zero vote. I think fighting antisemitism should be a bipartisan issue. It doesn't matter if you're Jewish or not Jewish, it doesn't matter if you're Republican or Democrat. This is something that we all must come together and unite in order to fight it. We just saw in the past two weeks, two dangerous, violent terrorism attacks against Jewish people in the United States. I can tell you as a Jewish person, I knew this day would come, and very sad in the state, we and we might be expecting more days. We must fight together, we might, we must come united as we can. And having those types of confirmations are something that was not against Jews. It is not against the human, but is only for our children. It is to ensure that our children are taught the right soul information, they are not taught to hate any minority Americans. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, is there anybody else here? All right, so we'll move on to our student representatives.
I was gonna give a commendation to Ella, though she wasn't here when we did a commendation, would you mind if I called for a second? Just want to commend Ella. She has been here with us for a year now. She prepares ahead of time, she gives us very thorough updates. You even come to meetings that you weren't, didn't have to come to video, they were off-cycle or during break or, or whatnot, and you've been down to school now for about a week or so, you're in the middle of your senior week, and you're still here. So I just want to commend, bet you for your service to your level students and to our community as a whole. It's been an absolute pleasure having you here. And we just hope that you let us know how you're doing. We, nice yas and sal around town, I asked how do these students, to just keep us up to date on what we're doing, and we wish you the best.
Well, thank you. Thank you, I've loved, I've loved this job so much, it's just, I love taking active part in the community, and it's just been very rewarding. So thank you for giving me the software to meet, and I'll definitely keep you guys updated with my life. Thank you.
So, let's hear it.
And I just wanted to introduce our new student representative for next year, Will Cookshank. Dr. Carlson and I went through a process of applications and interviews, and Will came out on top, so congrats, Will, I'm welcome. And now move on to the update. So, this week's senior week, so most of my update is senior-related. But graduation is tomorrow, hopefully on the field, but we're not sure about the weather, so possibly in the fieldhouse at 6:00 PM. Acapella, the choirs, the bands, the band, the orchestra, they'll all be performing, it's gonna be great. Senior prom was this past Tuesday, that was amazing. Jared really organized a great prom at the State Room in Boston, had a beautiful view. The tickets were super cheap, and it was just, everything was perfect. Signing day, I think, was about a week and a half ago. Twenty-five athletes from Marblehead High School signed to continue their sport in college, which was super exciting, especially because only, I think, six percent of athletes continue their sport in college, so that was really cool. Cheerleading tryouts will be held June 9th, 11th, and 12th. They like to do tryouts before the fall season, so they can get started on that in the summer. The scholarship awards night was last night, there were a bunch of great scholarships given out to very deserving seniors. We had a huge outcome, I think there were sixty listed scholarships, but each scholarship had sub-scholarships. It was super amazing how much this community gives back to the senior class, it was super great to see. Bio MCAS were these past two days, I'm pretty sure, which is great, and hopefully the freshmen did well on that. The culture feast was last, was May 30th, so I think, like, not last Friday, but Friday the 4th. That was great, I went and performed in that in luminescence. There were a bunch of different student groups performing, some great food from different cultures, and it was just, it was a great event to really support bringing different cultures together. And then, lastly, the underclassmen awards will be held June 12th at 6:00 PM in the fieldhouse. Thank you. Congrats.
This is hopefully outside, maybe you can have, maybe it's.
It's gonna be outside, I feel good.
Yes, fingers crossed.
We'll see you. Good job. Okay, I am gonna move on to district academics, superintendent Bowden.
Thank you, Dachner, good evening, let me start by saying Happy Pride Month. The school year's been winding down, but there's still plenty going on. Firstly, I want to thank the school committee for putting their trust and confidence in me and providing me with your contract as superintendent. I'm very excited to be here in a more permanent way, and look forward to continuing the great work that is taking place across our educational community. I feel blessed to be able to call Marblehead by home for the foreseeable future. Thank you to everyone who has expressed their support. Solid communication and collaboration is essential to being able to inform, and I feel that this necessary component is in place will help guide our district's overall success. I had the great pleasure of visiting the sixth graders while in Bourndale. I have to say that I was thoroughly impressed with our staff, the chaperones, the Bourndale staff, and especially our students. They were engaged in hands-on experience and learning in ways that made learning come alive. I can unequivocally say that despite the torrential rain and wind that I luckily missed on Thursday, because I went on Wednesday, that it was a time that the students will not soon forget. My fishing expedition was very successful, I landed a giant fish, thank you. Student athletes signing day, as Helen just mentioned, was on the 29th. I was able to witness the excitement and impressed with the support of the family. So thanks to Ken Wheeler and his staff for pulling this day together. Can I just, I just want to read, I would just want to read the athletes and where they were going, if you'll indulge me. Nate Assa, cross-country track and field, going to Purdue University. Madeline Hourback, swimming and diving at Clarkson University. Ella Benedetto, sailing at Yale University. Ben Berquist, swimming at Babson College. Jacob Bobowski, track and field at Springfield College. Luca Bornhorst, softball at Stonehill College. Bryn Lee Callahan, swimming at Bentley University. William Silo, Cross Country Track, University of Tampa. Seamus Crowley, track and field, Rome City Institute. Logan Duty, swimming, St. Lawrence University. Madison Forbes, LaBrosse, Skidmore. Drew Goldman, football, Wesleyan University. Justin Gonzalez, football, Massachusetts Maritime Academy. Abby Goodwin, cross-country Union College, Nice, Dodgers, Amalot. Jane Cox, sprint, sprint football, University of Pennsylvania. Eva Machado, track and field, St. Lawrence University. Reese Moore, LaBrosse, Roger Williams University. Jonah Potak, cross-country at Endicott. Nathaniel Rosen, swimming, Wesleyan University. Charlie Roswell, Rozell, sorry. Track and Field, University of Vermont. Woody Smith, football, Massachusetts Maritime Academy. Jacob Salzwick, sorry, Jack. Jacob Salzwick, uh, sorry, Jack, uh, so thanks. Track and field, University of Massachusetts Lowell. Sam Thompson, football, also Union College. And Rory Sem- Sempease. Soccer, Skidmore College. So I was just wanting to read those out because I thought it was really cool.
In New York.
Yeah. Yeah.
The different winter, thank you.
They do. They need to bundle up.
That's wonderful. That's great. Did we get that hopefully to the press and?
Yeah, I, I think Michelle Paulson already sent that. If you didn't get it, I'll get it to you, but I don't.
It's really great. It's very exciting.
Think she did, but I considered it. Uh, senior projects were shared on Friday, May thirtieth. I was otherwise occupied, but I heard it was a great job by all involved. Saw photos and heard the projects were really impressive. Uh, Witness Brown, fun one last week. It was a beautiful day and the students were so excited. As it were, the team colors ran around the building to cheering crowds. Um, sorry, I almost knocked um this fox off the sidewalk over there. What a great way to expend some energy and enjoy some time outside with peers. Uh, culture feast, as Ella said, was a big success. I was able to swing by on Friday for a while, enjoy some of the dishes from different cultures and a chat with students. Many community members, including Representative Armenia, were there. Uh, great job by Mecca seniors. And our Mecca director, KJ Johnson, for pulling the event together is well attended. I think there's plenty of food and ice cream to go around while enjoying the performing arts. Um, I won't do the other events. It's too many. Uh, and. Yeah, I know. Nope, graduate. Um, I do wanna, okay, so graduation is tomorrow night and I want to express an early graduation, uh, early congratulations to our seniors. And share my dadness and say, have fun, remember who you are and be safe. I also want to share some of the colleges and universities our seniors will be attending and some other endeavors that they will be embarking upon. So I have another list. I'm gonna try to go through quickly, but I think it's important to recognize the universities and colleges and endeavors. Uh, so we have Auburn University, Babson College, Bentley University, Boston College, Boston University, Bowdoin College, Bucknell University. Uh, we have people going to our career education and trade schools. We have Chaplain University, Foxon University, Coastal Carolina. Holgate University, Concordia University, Cornell. Dah- Dahouzi University, Elon University, Emory Riddle, Aaron Nautical University. Emerson College, Emmanuel College, um, Endicott College, Fairfield University, my son's alma mater. Fisher College, Florida Atlantic University, Fordham University. Georgia Institute of Technology Main Campus, Gordon College, High Point University, Indiana University, Bloomington. James Madison University, Kennebec Valley Community College, Kent School, Lehigh University, Loyola University, Maryland. Massachusetts College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences, Mass Maritime Academy, McGill University, Merrimack College, Methodist University. Michigan State University, New England College, New Hampton School, sorry. Only one and a half more pages. North Shore, North Shore Community College, Northeastern University, Northwestern University. Palm Beach Atlantic University, Pratt Uni- uh, Institute, Providence College, Gold Friars. Purdue University Main Campus, Quinnipiac University, Roger Williams University, Rome City Institute, Route North Shore Inc. St. Anselm's College, St. Joseph's College of Maine, Salem State University, Sarah, Sarah Lawrence, Sarah Lawrence College. Savannah College of Art and Science, Simmons University, Skidmore College, Springfield College, St. Lawrence University, Stanford University. Stonehill College, Stony Brook University, Suffolk University Syracuse. The University of Tampa, University of Tennessee Knoxville, Trinity, Tufts, Tulane University. Union College, United States Marine Corps. University of College Dublin, University of California, Los Angeles, University of California, Santa Barbara. University of Colorado Boulder, University of Connecticut, University of Maryland. UMass, Amherst, UMass Boston, UMass Lowell, U of Miami, U of Michigan, Ann Arbor. University of Pennsylvania, University of Rhode Island, University of Richmond. University of South Carolina Columbia, U of Utah, U of Vermont. Uh, U of Wisconsin Madison, Vanderbilt University, Bachelor College, Villanova. Virginia Tech, Wentworth Institute of Technology, Wesleyan University, William and Mary, and finally Yale University. So congratulations. And again, a couple of important things to go through and recognize. That's a very impressive list. I have two more quick things. I want to recognize and welcome Will Crochank, who already left, but I have him on my list. As a new student representative and to thank Ella for all of her time as a graduating student representative and was shown well at Yale. Uh, lastly, the elections are on Tuesday and I want to say good luck to both Ms. Fox and Ms. Taylor. Um, and regardless of how the process goes, I want to publicly thank you both. For the support that you provided me in my first year of Marblehead. It's certainly been a busy one. And I've said many times, without the support of the school committee, the superintendent job becomes that much more difficult. So thank you both. That's all I have. Chair Shablon.
Thank you. It was used more than what you're writing, that's why. Um, thank you, John. Appreciate that very much. Okay, um, moving on. I have a schedule of bills. I am looking for. Um, a consent agenda and actually I'm gonna approve that. It does not have many minutes. Long, uh, all year. If you think over the summer, we're gonna need to work on, um. Really sort of figuring stuff. We've had some good starts and things that are getting, um, is completed, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of go Plan B, I think.
Yeah, right. Um, so I will commit to working on that. Um, some of this is, you know, budget oriented as well, so we have to be focused on that. But so I am looking for a motion to approve scheduled bills. Um, for a total of seven hundred nine, seven hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred sixty-three dollars and thirty cents. So moved. Move to Sarah. And Ryan, uh, any questions, comments, deliberation? About Allison online? Right, I'm gonna ask the whole, um, Brian, what else?
Okay.
Sarah Box? Favorite. Um, Al Williams?
In favor.
And Allison Taylor? Oh, sorry, Allison. You should be able to unmute it.
Yep, I'm not a panelist, so, um, I, in favor, sorry.
I'm gonna, should I just promote you earlier? So that should be a little easier.
No worries. I had to, when I got out of the car, I had to.
All right, are you in favor? Are you in favor?
Yeah, I said, I said in favor.
Oh, sorry, in a minute. Okay, six, five, four, three, two. Thanks, Allison. Um, okay, we're gonna move on to school committee communication and discussion items. First, we have a financial update from our assistant superintendent. Of financing operations, Mike Proler. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, good evening. Uh, this is the eleventh. We have completed our eleventh month of our fiscal year. We are in our final month. Of, uh, May thirty-first. We have expended thirty-six point eight million dollars of our budget. We have an additional eight million dollars in convert, which the majority of that is salaries. And, um, that represents about ninety-six percent of our budget has been committed through eleven months. The unexpected balance right now, or as of May thirty-first, was one point eight seven million dollars. And I just give you an idea, that is five hundred eighty thousand dollars less than what we had at the end of April. So trending in the right direction, but not trending too fast. So I feel very comfortable going into the end of the year. Uh, payroll, as you know, is, this is our busiest month for payroll. Our, our teaching staff. Can elect to have a portion of their salary deferred to the summer months. So we have to, uh, that's a big month for us, June is a big month for us for payroll. Uh, at this time, Superintendent Rabado and I are going to. Um, start our discussions around making recommendations for items that are not in the budget. Uh, but certainly are needed for the district. Uh, one thing that we've already discussed is pre-games for tuitions for next year, special tuition tuitions. Get a head start on that. And there are some other needs of the district that are not in the budget that we'd like to address before we get to the end of the year.
Um, we had talked about during the budget process, because in the eleventh hour, um, the town had come back and said, as we all know, there. They were two million off on their projections. And so they had asked us to pull out. Um, our capital asks. We talked about if we, as we got closer to the end of the year. If we were safe in the projections according to what you thought. That we make the schools whole again with those capital asks, because legally, they're one-time laws. There, there's a legal mechanism for doing that. Are we looking like we can fulfill all of our capital asks that we originally had planned?
So I have had a conversation with the town's chief financial officer. And we provided, so we've gone out to bid. The three things that were removed from our budget was the, um, portion of the reupholstering of the pack. Um, forming arts center seating, a small portion, about thirty thousand dollars of about a hundred and forty. Uh, we kept about a hundred and ten again. Uh. So that's, that's about thirty thousand there. Big one was the pack painting of the ceiling and the walls of the forming arts center. And again, I like to do things logically. I have a hard time replacing the seats if we don't paint first. Um, so, uh, she has, and we have run out to bid on that, even though we knew that we didn't have the funding to go out to bid. We're about to award the, um, painting contract. And provided we get paintbrush on the wall before June thirtieth, we can use this year's funds if we have surplus funds. Uh, so that's Superintendent Robert and I will be discussing with the State Committee in the very near future.
Do you, all right. Do you have a sense from the contractors, it's also their time to be heating outside. So it's sometimes really hard to secure them for indoor work, because this is.
The, the bid specified that it had to be done in the summer.
Okay.
Anybody responding to the bid knows that.
Knows that. All right, so.
Uh, and then the final thing was the Glover playground. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to put a shovel in the ground before June thirtieth. So there's no way to carry that one before. So that's the one thing that we're gonna need to go back to the town for next year for additional funding.
Is there a mechanism? Because again, my goal was always to make everybody. If that's the answer, maybe no, but I, I have to ask the question. Is there a mechanism? To prepay extra in the amount of that would offset the Glover and then do a line item transfer to offset that? In the, in the next budget. It'd be very transparent for it, but ultimately making sure everybody's whole across the board and Glover's getting what they need to.
Yeah, so there is, um, state legislation or state laws around what you can prepay.
Yeah.
You can prepay your collaborative education in three months of private education. Um, so I think we're gonna be right up against that. So I'm not sure how much more we can prepay legally. So I'm gonna have to investigate, investigate that with, um, the Ciccolito. And figure out what we, what we can stretch to. Uh, our target is a minimal of nine hundred thousand key pieces for what we did last year. But if there, if we can stretch that further, we start from the other.
And again, I want to make sure we're staying in, in compliance with the law, but where we had no. Runway to know that the town was, had a, had a miscalculation. I, I want to, if. And make this possible.
Goodness, Chair.
Yep.
Um, so I think just to piggyback on that, I, I agree with you and Mike and I, I started those conversations. I think some of like with the reduction of the funding from the town side for the Glover playground. We had a meeting, we had a meeting today and just talked about it with stakeholders, some stakeholders. I think part of the issue that we'll need to understand is this, I know you guys were saying for the, um, the general public, this procurement of laws. And his timelines that it kind of really bulked things out way longer than you think. Like, we can't just go buy a piece of playground equipment and just get a playground. So there's processes and it was very difficult for us to take that next step with that reduction in funds. And to try to get a bid out there back for June thirtieth, we had to spend the funds. And then not knowing exactly how much we're gonna have to kind of offset the funds of the town's back. So it's a lot of parts there.
No, I know.
Yeah, so I appreciate the conversation because I, I, I feel the same way, like trying to make everybody as whole as possible. Um, and I know Mike's working with, you know, the town side to, to try to make sure everyone kind of needs getting that. And I think at the end of the day, um, we'll be in a good place. There's just a couple of things that we might have to kind of bulk a little bit. Uh, because we want, because I think we're kind of forced to, everybody's stubborn, so, yes.
One more, uh, just kudos for initial. I know that you had approved. The funding for the scoreboard and, um, I got a call from Park and Wrap today and I know you amended my firm working so well with Shelley Pedrosian. And I know Shelley put in a lot of effort to also work with you, get the costs down. Um, on that scoreboard. It's just a really great example of two different departments in town really working together to make sure that every penny of, whether it's private funding in town or taxpayer money. Is really getting the most value. So I appreciate the work we've done with, with Shelley. I appreciate her working with you. Um, to keep that cost of the scoreboard down. It's actually.
Yeah, there's a third play. Yes, the light department has agreed to, to be our lift. Uh, to remove the old scoreboard and install a new one with us. We'll, we'll use our electrician, but they will be doing the heavy lifting. Uh, with their, their equipment. So thank you to the young lady.
That's amazing.
This is not just town money, well, at all. You know, it's resident, some private money from, um, various organizations in town, but it's. Everyone working together to make sure we're getting the most for our kids.
Archibras Youth, youth sports in town, uh, light department, um, all been very supportive and helpful in the process. So very appreciative to them.
And then our, our tech director and also our vice, who's gonna come up and dump some cheese. Likes cheese on his side.
I mean, for watchers.
All right, any other questions or, or Mike?
Thank you. And so I guess the next step will be at some point in the year, those apps for.
I'm over the soundboard.
All right, um, moving on, we have our new risk survey, Sally from Springfield, Regina Hart. Welcome, Miss Hall.
How are you? Good. Thank you for having me.
This report always makes me a little nervous.
So I think we're gonna see that there's some really positive trends, which is great.
You have a.
Yes.
So I need to make her.
No, he said, so I'm Julia Hart. I'm a clinical social worker and I work at the high school. And I am going to speak to you today about our data collection. We have a school-wide survey every year on substance use and health. And that is what we're gonna talk about. So before I dive in, um, this is our fourth year of data collection and it's so, so important. That we have support around this data collection because it tells us where our students are at. It gives us kind of an idea of the needs and strengths of our student community. And I just want to thank, um, Central for being so supportive. John and Julia, Ellie's, Tori, her team, the time to meet with me and talk with me about it. Um, even helping craft some questions. It's all the stuff that Allison, who's there, um, from the start, kind of pushing through the logistics. Um, and so it's really important, this data, um, it gives us a sense of where we're at and it informs our. Health curriculums, our tiered interventions, our programming. Um, and so using this as a tool every year to kind of see where we are, definitely going to see some positive trends and healthy directions. It's hard to know exactly the reason, but I, I would like to think that, um, you know, partly because of the great work that we're doing and that we're always trying to improve upon. All right, so. Um, if we can actually go back to the, the first slide, the very first slide. Yep, the very first slide. Thank you. So it's the substance use and risk-related factors survey. It's administered by M G H and we do the logistics and then we also have. Um, supplemented questions through anonymous Google form that we are actually able to craft ourselves. Our leadership team meets and discusses kind of what's missing from the, the bulk of the survey and what can we ask. So it's all four grades, ages fourteen to eighteen. We have a really high response rate. We have a eighty-four point five percent response rate, which has increased over the last few years. We do a lot of work to try to, um, increase that in. Um, the parent and guardians always have the option to offer their students out. We have a really great process of making sure that, um, we do that with sound measures. And we really obviously respect that parents may want to offer their students out, but it's really great for us to get a high response rate. And because we communicate so much about the importance of the survey, um, parent and guardian offer has actually decreased over the last. So we do this every fall. Um, this year it happened October ninth. And to increase student volume, because we want students to feel comfortable sharing. Um, sometimes it can be hard to share information about, um, yourself on a school survey, but it really is confidential and anonymous. It's done through a compliant red cap. Um, and we share the data with the students before they take it to show students are actually entering this. Um, and we have longitudinal data that you're gonna see. You're gonna see the data compared to, um, other. Schools in the state that took the exact survey as well as, um, the youth health survey. You're only gonna see comparisons if the questions are exactly the same. And I just want to note going into looking at comparisons, it's important for us to think about how Marblehead is unique. In its demographics and demographics and location. And so while we do want to compare to other, um, cities and towns, it's important to note that we are in a different state. So you'll hear me talk about risk and protective factors, which are things that make our student population, um, either protected from or more vulnerable to, and substance use. And then the thing that people always ask is, you know, are students actually honest on this survey? And I think it's really important that, I just talked about all the volume that we try to create, and we have to look at relative, relative differences over time and trends. And that this is a jumping off point for us to start, and that's the, the way it's. All right, so demographics. And I'll leave it up for people to look at. Our, our, our student body is becoming more diverse. In the past, we've had about ninety percent identify as white. Um, just a couple notes, gender identity, um, gender diverse is transgender, non-binary gender, queer, another gender. Sexually diverse is gay, lesbian, bisexual, queer, asexual, trans. All right, so just some of the basics, protective factors, things that we're really looking for, um, that are helping our students. Many of our students are connected with their. Many of our students are connected with their peers, a lot of our students, um, we always want to make it higher, but it's a good amount of our students are feeling connected to staff members at the school. We know that that increases academic and social emotional outcomes. Um, forty percent of students feel we're happy about support, they receive, we know extracurriculars are a protective factor. But with huge majority of our students engaged in extracurriculars like music, sports and clubs. Um, one risk factor is not enough, of our students are getting enough sleep, they're recommended sleep for their age. Um, so that's. Alright, so mental health, so the questions are trying to get to diagnostics above the risk threshold for anxiety, depression and psychotic experiences. So you'll see all the red of the last three years of Marblehead and the blue is other schools. We are seeing a positive trend downwards for anxiety, we're seeing twenty-one percent for depression, uh thirteen percent this year. And psychotic experiences eight percent this year. And if you look at um other schools, some, we're a little lower and right around the same. And so we're seeing a a positive trend over the last few years, which is amazing, um, and I think. You know, we want to think about what are we doing to try to support this, and we'll talk about that at the end. Um, I just wanted to make a note about psychotic experiences, it's something that's not often talked about, but it's so important to talk about because students are struggling with this. And if you look at the little box around state data, which shows kind of the comparison, um, we see that we're we're kind of right. Right on par with state data, and early detection and treatment of psychotic experiences is so key to treating this diagnosis. And so it is important that we are recognizing it and talking.
That seems typically high for psychotic experiences, I mean.
Yep, I know.
Especially in the population, doesn't have that hundred percent of psychotic.
It, yeah, and and I think that's that's why I know that it's important, I think about. Something to talk about because I think it is really surprising to people. Um, about eight percent of our students are experiencing that, but if you look at other schools, it's even higher, and if you look at state data, it's right around the same. And I think that's, sometimes it's fairly emerging, sometimes it has to do with substance use, but it is something that our students are experiencing with it. It it doesn't mean that it's going to turn into a full psychotic diagnosis with psychosis, however, it is something that could turn into it, and so we wanted us. Keep an eye on it, recommend it on the treatment.
What definition were the students given for them to use to say whether they've been.
Yes, so it's symptoms of psychosis and seeing or hearing things that aren't there. That yet, yep, and I know.
If it's induced by drugs.
So there is separately when we get to substances, you'll see some questions specifically around. And so it is important to know, I know it sounds like it's a lot, but we, this is things that our students are experiencing.
So more than one in ten of our students is seeing and hearing something that's not there.
So it's eight percent of seven hundred, I I don't have enough on the top of my head, but.
Oh, I'm looking at the eleven for other schools. Still, like, eight percent is pretty close to one in ten.
Well, seven hundred is, I'm I'm not sure that the off the top of my head.
One in ten is ten percent.
Right, so so yes, I mean, I think it's had this, has this ever happened to you? And it doesn't mean that our, all of these students are going to develop a a diagnosis of psychosis. But yes, these are things that our students are experiencing, and I think this conversation always happens when we see the data, so.
In the general, what's the statistic in the general population, not just high school, what would you, you would guess?
Yeah, I I think it's, I think it's probably to get an actual diagnosis as an adult, it's probably a little bit lower because these things always turn into it. Yeah, but so I think it's an important conversation to have. Okay.
Through the chair, Jen, can I ask, uh Gina, for, just to to, on the previous slide, to. From Sarah's question, is that question, when it's asked here versus um in the other section, in the substance section? Is it clear in this section that you're asking if students have, is the question clear that you're asking if students have had these types of experiences without any? Um.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question, so it doesn't like clarify in the first question that like not related to substance use, but the substance use question does. So that's a good point, but I but I do think it it we still need to look at the fact.
Oh, yeah, not, I'm not discounting it at all, I was just curious how the, from Sarah's.
That's a great question. Thank you. Okay, suicidal thoughts and behavior, um, so we're looking at non-suicidal self-injury, so that would be like self-arm. Suicidal thoughts, and then there's plan and attempt, and so again, the red is twenty Marblehead over the last three years. Um, and so obviously, these are, these are concerning numbers. One of the things that we were really concerned about last year was that uh suicide attempts had been up to three percent, it has decreased to one percent. And again, I just want to point out that we're right around the same other school. But this is really important to look at because of the safety issue, and we have really great programming. Working at least in marine student services around safety assessments that are, that the health staff are doing, um, suicide prevention with health classes, and so. Just always something that we execute. I mean, this is. I'm just.
So. So, so concerning.
Yes.
We have seventy-two students of. Seventy-two students in our high school that have gone as far as to make the plan to fight suicide. And then we have. Well, I did only about eight percent, so it was a little higher. Um, and. We have two to three students who have attempted, that's, that's a big number.
Yeah, and I think it absolutely, this is why we take this, and I think again, we just, you know, it's not specific to Marblehead, and this is why it's so important that we have. Not only in the school, but in the community with sources of that, and, yeah. We have a lot of policies in place, and that's something I know that the safety committee will be able to talk about.
Just throwing out for the percentages, is these percentages, I'm looking at them, this is the percentage of our student body, or is this the percentage of responding?
On response, so what are, what about eighty-five percent of our students respond?
Not much better.
And I think, sure, but I think, you know, I I I'm very concerned, moral concern about the number, right, so that's not. Certain of the numbers, and I think the good thing about having this stat is that we can have solid information to then create ways to address the issues. So that's, that's why we're doing this, um, through these surveys and have these discussions, Gina did a really nice job, but I'm really sick of this. Um, so whereas I look at the trends and the trends are looking better, obviously we want those trends going forward. We don't want to have any attempts, more clearly, and you know, I think the more we talk about, the more that we have the conversations, the more that we have these discussions. Ask the questions, get the supports in place, the the fall of that trend is going to go down, so I'm I'm actually excited that we're moving in the right direction. Um, and I'm not going to talk about, you know, I'm not going to talk about COVID and stuff, but you know, we're coming off of COVID, obviously, and numbers are a lot, a lot higher than, you know, really long. Trying to anyway, so I just, I just want to.
Yeah, and I think it's important to know, you know, I I think not every school does this data and analysis, and so it's so great that we have the support to be, and so we know what we're. Okay. Okay, some questions on body and disorder eating, um, again, a little bit of a positive trend downward around. Um, students that feel negatively about um their body image, it's still about thirty-seven percent. And a question a little bit more captured around disorder eating is um. Having trouble focusing, um, because they're constantly thinking about what your shape's felt funny most of them. Experiences of discrimination based on race or ethnicity, so this is soon to identify as other than non-hispanic or white. Uh, because we really want to capture students' color, what their experiences are. Um, so there's a few, a few things here, you know, one of the things that I always look at is where you call racially insulting means that's the highest percentage. Um, we don't have information about how, where these insults are happening or these experiences are happening, but we know that our students are saying. That in their life that's happening to them, so that's important for us to look at. Experiences of discrimination based on personal identities, and so you can see your gender identity, sexual orientation, immigrant, disability, socioeconomic status. These are all things, um, that students are felt um discriminated against, so these are vulnerable populations. Couple other data points to point out, um, sixty-seven percent of uh students that identify as sexually diverse, as well as fifty percent students that. Identify as gender diverse are above the risk threshold for anxiety depression, similar to state and national data, uh, vulnerable population for mental health. And then there's a couple of data points here, um, in particular, multiracial. And then seniors always have the highest rates of um anxiety and depression, it's a little bit lower than last year. Um, and so that's positive, but we've had a lot of conversations about kind of what's going on for density care and the pressure. Um, this is so important, another, either protective or respective depending, but um who do we talk to about your mental health? Access to mental health, de-stigmatization about mental health, um, being able to talk to somebody about it's such a protective factor. And so what's great is a lot of students are talking to their parents or caregivers, um, their friends, although we, we really want them to be talking to adults, um, mental health. Person outside of school, school staff, those numbers are a little bit lower, whatever we can do to have conversations about increasing access. Um, and then no one, that that is obviously a respect, so about fifteen percent of students say that they're not talking about it. And so that's a good. Alright, so now we're going to move on to questions with substance use. So lifetime use, the question is, have you ever had a sip of alcohol, have you ever uh baked in nicotine or um marijuana products? And so this is Marblehead over the last three years, we can see that the numbers are just around the same. And if we want to look at state data, which is important again, where do we, where do we stand, um, this is the state Y H S up in the corner, so we look, um. We look. A little bit. Right around the same for alcohol, a little bit lower for nicotine. Um. So I write around the same for nicotine, but a little bit lower.
So do you break this down by um grade level?
Yes, so I, what I, I should have said is, we have so much information to to put it all on this slide, and we'd be here all night, so I will say I don't have it in here, but we do. We do have it, yes.
If it's, if it's.
Yeah.
Would you mind sharing this with the committee, I know I'd like to see, I don't know if the rest of the committee would, um, by grade level, because. You know, you do hear that there's pat, and the patterns kind of show a little bit more that peer pressure, if you will, you know, how it how it ebbs and flows, what. What are the kids doing now, I'm looking at eighty-five, I don't know, right now, I say that, but. I'd be interested to see if there is that ebb and flow and what it is.
Yep, yeah, we have, we have these answers by grade level, so I'm happy to share that and just let you know. Yep, and then we'll see like um age of first use too. Um, okay, next slide, so so then there's a question about regular. Once in three days in the past thirty days, so for alcohol, we are a little bit higher than um other schools that took the survey, and I think that's.
Higher, that's a little bit.
Important, it is absolutely important for us to note that. Um, for nicotine and cannabis, we're right around the same, and then if you look at the daily use, we're again right around the same. But but it is something, um, and in a, in a couple of slides, we have a focus group that we talk to students about it. You'll see one of the things is that alcohol is, seems to be more accepted than somebody else's.
Back on what John said in his opening, going into weekends of graduation and celebrations and things like that. I just, for anybody listening, um, reading the newspaper or listening at home. It's really, really important that people, I mean, I look at, we're four times higher in alcohol use. You know. It's, it's hard to be the hard parent and and to and to say no, uh, you know, at things for. For parties and and graduations, but it's, it's really very, very important. And I just, we've had multiple tragedies in our, in our history as a town, and it's clear we're higher than other towns, so let's. As a town, kind of be aware of that and do our part, because you can't just rely on the school, like you can't send your kids to school and they. The message is going to be embedded in them there, y'all have to practice what we preach, and this time of year. Parents and families in the community, they really they roll in getting that number back.
Thank you.
Sorry. Want myself back.
No, yep, very important for communities and friends. Okay, age of first use, this is the statistic I read earlier, but the chances of developing an addiction are nearly seven times higher for teens who begin using before the age of fifteen. And for those who delay uses until twenty-one or older, and ninety-six percent of adults with a substance use disorder begin for the age of twenty. So it's really important that we're identifying, when are our students used? And so this slide, there's a lot here, a lot of our students are using alcohol, nicotine, cannabis before the age of fifteen. And so we had a lot of conversations about how, what are we doing at the lower levels, and it's, it's often. At that developmental stage, it's not always just about direct substance use education, it's about identifying protective and destructive factors, social emotional support. And I think some of these conversations kind of helped me to getting their health teacher acknowledged, and so. Um, it's just important to know that this is happening early for some.
Seven. Seven percent of our elementary school students, that's their first time to use, twelve or younger, that's elementary. Seven percent of our students started drinking in elementary. But we as a community, we have, we just have to do better.
Alright, impaired driving, students have said, I have driven after drinking alcohol or if you're under using marijuana, um. More likely to do so than using marijuana, it's a small percentage, but it's still with the safety risk concerning, so always want to look at that. Um, we, we answered this question that kind of captured a little bit better, somebody that's in a car with somebody under concern. And so it, the data actually reduced this year, which was really positive to see, um. But have you ever been in a car with someone else who's writing and has substance, and who substances in a way that they're concerned? So, education around, um, in here, guys, well. This is, um, we do a lot of consulting with Chief King about this first question, and Julia worked on this question, and we modified it. Because we didn't feel like the data was so accurate last year. First, we asked who has a license, and then we asked, um, how often do you text off grid? Um, so we had a lot of students that are saying they they text off, and so this is another thing that we want to look at. Um, go ahead. Um, peer perceptions of substance use, social norms theory states that if we feel like our peers are doing something, we're going to be more likely to react. And so, um, seventy percent of students said that they think their peers are using alcohol at a higher level than the data indicates. Sixty-six point two percent for nicotine and forty-eight point six percent for marijuana, so that's right, it's really important. Like social norms campaigns around like sharing the data and having this conversation, student to student is going to help reduce, uh. Couple other things to note, um, students are trying to quit, especially uh nicotine, because it is really, it's a difficult thing to do when it is so addictive. Um. Students that are using the past thirty days, this number of them are attempting to quit. Um. Prescription drugs, not use as prescribed, which is going to encompass a lot of the high overdose risks, things like opiates, fentanyl, it can be found, it's a fentanyl. It did actually increase about one percent from last year, um.
Then it would adderall?
Um, adderall would be under methamphetamine, but it, but yes, it could be, yes. Um, and so, again, a small percentage, but with the overdose risk, it's so, it's so great that we're still waiting on our paying policy, do years though. Uh, our nurses carry it, several people in the buildings carry it, so that's. Okay, um, as you said, you know, parental attitudes toward substance use, and so, uh, you know, a protective factor is. Parents found having the boundary or consequence around regular substances, um, a large percent said yes. And then what's also a protective factor is this question is going down, adults using substances in a way that um has made students concerned. Has decreased to eight percent, but obviously that is equal to that, a little bit of their students. Okay, John and Julia worked hard on this question.
Um, thanks.
We really wanted to capture, and and again, this helps kind of inform the need for the social media program in the weeks of this year. Um. A lot of our students using social media daily, here's some of the platforms, Snapchat, Instagram, the base ones. Um, it's important that we ask about the positive aspects of social media, connection, business marketing, spreading awareness. But then also the negative effects, um, students identifying cyberbullying, fear pressure, um, self-comparison. Megan was a health facts, et cetera, and so a lot of our students are recognizing that this is something that can affect them. Um, and the project re-.
Yeah, that was great.
Yeah, thanks to Gina, we collaborated on this one, and specifically, um, she was helpful in getting me the data to realize that we did need to bring in. Um, some resources to support, so we brought the uh project reboot for our family's presentation, as well as our middle school and high school presentation. Um, so all students, grade seven through twelve, had, um, a really impactful presentation this year. So again, this data is directly informing our supporting our students and their family presentation, and thank Gina for that.
I think the students were very surprised by actually what came out of that conversation, I was there, and it was amazing, and they were generally, they made a job. I think the kids, the vendors really, I'm a fool that much, like.
We also want to talk to students, opening the bell. Instead of just like the, let's have a conversation, so we got focus groups, we had one on, on the seventh. A couple of the things that came up, alcohol is more accepted than other substances. In our health classes, they really enjoy that we have speakers coming and share their experiences, um, so their knowledge of why it seems used. Um, we asked about mental health support in school, and some of them talked about, they know where it is, but they may not access it, access it because of stigma. They report in about four to six hours of streams. They report in about four to six hours of screen time. Um, and they make some suggestions for parents to monitor themselves. So it's always great to get kids to know. Alright, there's so much that we're doing and I just, we always like to recognize that. And so we, we do present this data, not only to the students and the school committee, um, and work with, um, Andrew Pettit and Chief King as well, presenting the data. Um, but we presented to the faculty, it got presented to them in May. And so we just wanna recognize them for all the SEL work they're doing. Here's just like a couple snapshots of all the stuff that's happening, but. Um, and this is our larger faculty. We also, we have a mental health department at high school, uh, social workers, nurses, psychologists, psychologists, every day. Peer interventions, so we feel like that's really helpful for students to access. I just wanted to point out the health curriculum, they, they really are covering so much. And I just wanna, like, the great collaborative effort I heard from the health teacher today, take me, send me those slides so I can work on updating my eleven grade um, areas of focus. And so that's like another great reason why we sort of later. And the MS, they, this is what they're doing for substances, they're doing a lot. Um, they, they name their specific evidence-based program that they're using. We also do the, um, both high school and this, this is the SBRK screening, which is screening, briefing, screening, brief intervention, referral to treatment in seventh and ninth grades. And this is really a slide.
Yeah, thanks Gina. Um, so we're continuing to focus on multi-tier assistance of support, as Gina just mentioned with her tiered interventions. Um, through our work with, um, the student services department, um, we are continuing to focus on supporting students' academic and social emotional needs. Um, we are looking at the data to reduce those at-risk measures and outcomes, especially for marginalized or at our students. Um, we want all of our students to feel safe, supported and included in school. Um, this year, we adopted our new social emotional learning curriculum, grades pre-K to twelve. So it's the first time in the district we've ever had an SEL curriculum. We are so proud of that work. We're really proud of the educators who are implementing those lessons and activities. We've also done a lot of professional development and specifically with our, um, mental health team, they also received, um, special, professional development on how to embed those, uh, lessons for tier-two and tier-three supports. Um, we're also continuously working to support our educators with professional learning communities and to, to support all of our learners. We look at data all of the time, um, especially in our professional learning communities, um, and also what can be bringing in to support our educators' professional development and their professional learning, um, and allow time for them to collaborate with one another and all the amazing mental health clinicians in the district as well. Thank Gina.
Good, just about. Yeah, okay, so what are we doing? So, you know, recognizing what we are doing is amazing, but looking at the early use issue, examining local specifics, setting our community unique. Harm reduction is, um, research tells us that's a better way to approach, um, substance use routines as opposed to air tactics or random spending, obviously the SEL and mental health support. Justice program for our vulnerable populations, body image, eating disorders, um, parenting community program. Can't just rely on the schools to be doing this, the same messaging needs to be coming from the community and the parents and we work all together so that students are getting that support in a free approach. Social media, self-learning, such as continuing all of that, and using the school i-survey as an annual tool, as we have been doing to kind of you know, track the trends in the data over time, so we can see if the programming is. Yeah, that's it.
So next question, one thing I didn't see in here, it was speaking around, was we talked about you know, uh, you know, physical views, structural views, um, sense, um, is that not part of survey, not part of?
Yeah, so it definitely is, so it is a part of the survey, but we can definitely include that in, in some of the questions that we ask next year. Um, and what we need in the fall to kind of
I mean, I think it's.
We talked, we talked about it, um, yes, yeah, so, so we'll be going out in three and I how can we, we did this last week, like after, I feel like right after came out of that, so I said, I have answers, um, in light of the conversation we had, I think that's, that's a, that's a, we really need to look at. Um, and we'll add that to some candidates and then more so we can make it a little bit more robust, uh, in terms of information gathering.
There is, um, that's over, my senses. Yes, we had, uh, that's over, it's festival this month, so we're maybe some discussion around that, uh, as well. Possible resolution or whatever, you know, recognizing the mistake. And that fall under this dating violence, you know, relationship violence.
Absolutely, and the good thing about it is we have the ability to kinda add questions, so we can absolutely do that. And I, there is in the health curriculum, we do, um, they do have what you, you guys have done.
Yeah, I talked about that.
I do think, I, I, exactly, I, I do think it's.
It is at ninth grade too, it's all practicing healthy behaviors, building up relationships, teen gaining violence, it's okay, ninth grade, I think it's got into once, twelve grade different conversations, so again, for age five grade conversations, but it starts, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but it'd be good to get some.
I have, maybe I thought you guys can look into any medical facility you're in, if you're at a hospital, a doctor's office, when you're in the restroom, there's a sign. Um, essentially, do you feel safe? And if you don't, this is the steps you can take, at least any medical facility I've ever been in. It, I, I, I think would be beneficial to our students to find some type of messaging that is similar. But in our restrooms as well, um, because there are so many resources here at a school that they can utilize and this is where they are every day, versus they may be at a medical facility only, you know, once a year or twice a year, they're here every day. So, um, something to that effect.
So we, we talked a little bit about, um, some of those things in regards to, uh, to really anti-discrimination, and so, so I was thinking what you talked about, I think, uh, some messaging around the schools, maybe, uh, I think T J Johnson brought up, or like, who are always for like, you know, sort of being, feel like they're being bullied or, you know, how can they kind of thwart it? Kind of anonymously or in a way that, that I like, feel like they're telling, they get the message out, I think, something similar for that. Way to do, like, be in like, in the situation, you know, so I think technology these days, that, you know, there's so many ways we could do that, and in a way that we get better information. You know, when I looked at the, when I looked at some of that data and it says like, nobody talked about, about the mental illness. Like, what a great way to say, hey, I can do this in a way, what, what's the resources I can, and especially with, uh, with, uh, telehealth, telehealth, now you can get kids hooked up to, you know, mental health, well, stuff, or mental health. Things, and maybe in a different way, so, that explains that, yeah.
Um, any comments, Alison or Al, guys have any?
Thank you, Ms. Har, appreciate this. Oh, you said very important, very thorough, important, it's very hard, I, I'm looking for myself, I'm sure for others to hear, or hear, especially when we see those statistics of how young start kids start. But I, I appreciate this, it's good to see trends. Um, a lot of good work is being done, I know since last year, maybe the year before, you identified the trend that we were higher than normal with some of the eating disorder and, and body image, and you guys wanna target that, we've seen that has come down. So the data collection, driving what we're targeting, we're seeing, you know, statistically that, that it's improving and we're getting somewhere, so that's really good. It is still so scary, especially the age at which these kids are starting to use substances.
Thank you for having me and thank you for giving me that, the platform in the space is very engaging in the thoughtful conversation I read. Yeah, so moving on to, uh, guys for anyone?
There are some special guests joining me, so I'm gonna move over. You guys want? Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present, so, uh, Julia, this is a person of safety learning. And I'm here with Angie Graziano, our instructional coach, and Emily Perez, our instructor coach. I just wanted to start by saying thank you to Emily and Angie for the tremendous resources. Um, tremendous instructional leaders who are science experts and review. Um, so we have these slides to share with you tonight and we're gonna walk you through, um, our Harvard Public School Science Curriculum that we conducted this year. Um, I believe you already received a memo, um, and so here are the slides to accompany to kind of elaborate on what we're sharing with you in the notes.
Right in the slide, the audience, we have a couple extra copies, if anybody in the audience can't see the screen and wants to see the slides.
First, let's start, um, with a, a look at how we do conduct the site of curriculum review in Harvard Public Schools. Um, so we have a visual here, so what we really do is we, we learn, prepare, investigate, uh, so we launch year one. Um, the review of the content area that we're focusing on, so every content area gets examined every six years. Um, we've been, continue, uh, the process through years two to five. Um, and then we are back in that cycle of science, um, this was their review year. We're very excited, this is the first time in living years, and it has some of the, you got to share from the science educators um, about how they, uh, really appreciate they're using the process. Um, so we've linked a full document for the school committee to look at later, we really are thorough in our process. Um, and there's a lot more, this visual just kind of is a broad picture of the review process. Um, but there's also documents for you to look at, and we are very intentional. Um, we take this process very seriously, we align ourselves with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, uh, the standards that are for content areas, um, and as well as expectations for time learning, uh, and high-quality instructional materials. Um, I started to look at, um, what the part of our work is focused on, the part of our work is focused on equitable opportunities and outcomes for all students. Um, so through that, we look at, um, what are our values as a community of, uh, Harvard Public Schools? What is our student data telling us? And then what is the research showing us, what are best practices? Or best, uh, best ways to, um, help engage our students in that curriculum.
This is a little, a little more in-depth and information about our work. So the first thing that we do is we, as a, as a whole committee, build, um, background about whatever subject we're reviewing, in this case, the science. We look at research and then look at data from our, our school, my class, and I read in Excel. Um, we review our current curriculum that we have in place and know it has served our students. We looked at a survey that was sent out to us to gather as much feedback as possible, so we hear as many noises as possible. Um, and then from that information, from the research, from the data, with background information we build, we determine what our curriculum means for us to be. Um, and we create a tool based on the values that we share with each other based on the survey and based on high-quality instructional material guidelines from the Department of Education. And then we review materials and make some decisions together, and test out the materials, we, um, comparative materials to what the high-quality material guidelines are, and we share them, we talk about them with the staff, and we then make a decision, and create a plan for the future instructional needs, and as a stop here, we have an implementation plan in place. And we will continue our work next year.
So when we, when we do this, so we've kind of stayed in the process, now we're getting a little more specific to this year's science, uh, curriculum. We, we formed a committee, um, so we will acknowledge the meeting, but it was, um, and also led by me and myself, hours, months of work, really. Um, so this is a very kind of short version of the work, but, um, I think the thing that I very proud of, that it was a very thorough process and it wasn't rushed, and it's all stakeholders, uh, especially within the, uh, science departments, uh, were involved, so very proud of that.
So, um, I'm gonna talk us through our recommendations for coming through fall. We are recommending to adopt military science as our primary science curriculum for students in grades K through four. The first year implementation will include lessons from FOS, our current science curriculum, while we develop an updated spoken sequence for our educators and provide professional development for our educators. So it'll be a, um, a rollout next year where we're kind of mindful of, of what we're using, but then looking towards mystery science, and we already kind of had those conversations. We felt like mystery science is very engaging, a lot of positive feedback from educators, very current, and kids were very excited, um, about the lessons and that, so we'll write about that recommendation.
We'll see estimated costs on each slide. We have not gone to the full scope of getting final quotes for everything you've discussed tonight, because it may not for us. We wanted to present our work, um, these are probably preliminary estimates, um, all totaling two hundred thousand dollars, which is already um, we, that is the target. Um, again, it's just estimates of what we've gathered so far.
Materials as well, I know when we rolled out FOS, it took us many, many years to get kits for every. Does this cost provide all the consumables, the books, the, in addition to the consumables that we'll need?
Yes, and so what we also make, use this to check for, for examining that, and what we wouldn't be like, oh, what we're supposed to already have, because there isn't a chip option, but we don't want to buy it without really examining it, so.
The FOS kits make cover some of them.
Yeah, we may have some of the resources already, so we're being mindful of that, there is an option for that, and we'll speak about the the cost of being in terms of what we need. Um, the fifth one hundred though is the online access, um, for our educators and, um, with the materials linked, they'll just print from there, it's not a, uh,
Not a textbook for. But what I essentially was getting at is I can remember when not everybody had FOS kits and multiple classrooms were sharing, sharing a kit and the consumables might not be much. I wanna make sure that we're budgeting to make sure all of our classes have what they need, and we're not having educators, you know, run down the hallway to grab it from the. Also, back in the day, we could do schedules that this class might be doing science, and this one would juggle their time, so we could all share the same kit. Now with the work you've done to the line to make sure everyone's doing the same thing at the same time, we can't share. So I just wanna make sure that this gets you what we need.
Absolutely, we will definitely ensure that, and as Emily mentioned, we're doing, um, an implementation that's going, we're gonna prioritize some units first and also we'll make sure absolutely have the resources and hopefully.
Yes, so we wanna do this as we go along, we wanna get to a full presentation. But it's fine, okay.
Use of FOS kits is just a stopgap. At some point in time, it's gonna be a smister of property. So this is just, it's not like we're gonna use it every year for the rest of the. If you wanna make sure.
So for grades five through eight, we're very excited that we will have a live curriculum. So our students will start using McGraw-Hill's Inspire Science starting fifth grade. Um, it is a curriculum with surviving the quantum errors at this grade level, so it will be domain-based, sixth, third will be doing earth and space science. Second grade will be doing life science, and eighth grade we've been physical science, or if the class had been more integrated. We've looked at what committed the backers and decided this would be the best way to go for our students. Uh, there also is a piece to McGraw-Hill's actively learned as an online learning platform that will be used by our seventh graders. Um, and there's also a textbook component to Inspire Science, so it's got some online pieces, but also some textbooks. Um, as well as hands-on materials through what they call collaboration. Additionally, for the middle schools or seventh and eighth grade engineering, we like with, uh, we're recommending, we'll totally would, um, no atom for even the third. Um, it, some might have heard of no atom before, I said in our district in the past, um, as a pilot, it's, it's something we won't go. Um, but it's the the educator felt like that it was a good hands-on piece for that engineering.
And as you mentioned, so in further exercise, a line from five, which is tremendous for us. Um, it must be kind of seen, I, I should say, more pictures of the work that we did together, it was a save excitement, uh, the collaboration. Also, the educators feeling so valued in terms of, you know, leveraging their content knowledge and science and, and seeing, uh, a curriculum that they can use to inspire our, our science learners.
Was it not aligned with the course?
It was not. Okay, so we're gonna have one, um, product, right, and that we'll be using in those grades before was different products to each grade. So this has kind of scope and sequencing progression, that's offline, seniors' line, so, and instead of, uh, they do that, do this, and the kids have to, you know, will, will match up somehow, now it's completely, um, flying for those grades five, so.
When by saying no atom in McGraw-Hill, it covers, Massachusetts has standards that aren't always covered in, in programs. Uh, and so no atom addresses those standards, and it's very comprehensive.
Cross-curricular program two, I know when you rolled out Witten Wisdom, um, there's a, there's a lot of elements in the text that they'd be using in Witten Wisdom where they're actually learning about. in the text that they'd be using in Witten Wisdom where they're actually learning about science elements through the Witten Wisdom curriculum. Is there any type of alignment so that when they're learning about volcanoes through the text in Witten Wisdom, it's lining up with the science?
Yes.
They want to answer it. Yes. Sometimes it does align. However, we found that the most often the content topics within Witten Wisdom, which are very great and fascinating, are not always the science standards for that particular grade level. So unfortunately, it doesn't always match up. There are a few cases where it does match up. But we did. Yeah, exactly. So building that background knowledge in Witten Wisdom will help them with the science units and vice versa. So.
Good question. Next, we'll tell you a lot, and it does represent a lot of work, very collaborative work with our Marblehead High School science educator. So a couple of things I want to note. So we have outlined listed, these are recommendations for adoption based off the courses. Biology extremely outdated. That was a very much priority for us to get that updated. I'm very excited about the selections there. I want to know, as you go down, you're going to see AP as well. AP, the college board now has a requirement that you have to teach curriculum that is produced or published within the last ten years. We are out of date and out of compliance on some of that. So we're very excited. You'll see AP environmental, AP biology, AP chem, and AP physics. So we're looking to update those curriculum. It's very exciting that our teachers feel that these curricular selections are willing to support student learning and preparation for the AP exam. While we have some more quotes to get, we are estimating that to be $2,000. Some of these are wanting to be digital, so students will be able to go home and listen to the text. So a lot of built-in accommodations and differentiation opportunities for all learners. That that the online component is just amazing. And so something we do not, we do not have right now for our learners. So very excited about that. And again, really a great part of that for many of our publishing or Pearson is represented mostly here, but we do have Sabas, Senior Age, and Backford. So some variety, but really what the engineers felt was best for their course in the student learning.
Will all of these have an associated textbook, whether it be digital or physical, that every student will have access to at home?
So most are going to be digital. That's the way that the high schools, you know, operate most of now. So they will always have that digital component. We will be, there are some classes specifically that have requests on. So we would have additional copies for which students have extra learning time in the classroom more, especially, you know, where they might want to have some more resources. So plan that as part of the purchase as well. We've actually secured some of the materials through the review process. So it's been really nice. They've been looking at the art copies. And then we did already a kind of a training for the high school teachers on how to use the platform. And we're going to do another one as well as soon as hopefully it's approved. We have a plan, plan, hope it happens, K or anything else.
Does it get it is approved? It would pull out all four of the steps?
All four of them.
Oh, you would be. So you'd be doing happy over the summer?
Absolutely. So we've already started a lot of the work. We're in process. As I said, we can secure some of the materials for the teachers. So for example, if we have approved, you're sitting, we have something lined up next week where we get our science educators a training on the platform. They have access to us. They can look at that over the summer if they'd like. We have some plans for when they return in August for professional development. It's as well as in October.
She's had it budgeted to stifle people to do the professional development because what my concern is, is that we have students coming back that it takes run for anybody to learn a curriculum. And but our our students really. Well, he's up.
The fact is, what we did is part of the, there's a whole other column that's really not on here. And that is, what are the professional development needs? We asked that about some months ago from our educators. And we've identified what the professional development needs are. I'll highlight biology, for example. This curriculum is very similar, just to update it. So they they just said they're not going to need a lot of people, but they're good. They just, it's going to be new page numbers or something, for example. For AP environmental, I still actually completed the teacher this morning, and she's already planning, she's doing some work and ready to go for that. So we 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 know what's what we just want, need. We're planning for that. We are doing, we've already set aside funding through the PE line. And we are paying also, I just want to highlight some of our teachers who are going to be working to differentiate our curriculum. So we're going to have some science educators, some special educators working on doing that and set sites and funding for that. So that's really exciting. Because as you get in the high school, we have more level courses, but in our lower grades, we don't have level courses and we want to support all learners.
But the K eight is all of the breakdown, right?
Correct. And so that's where a lot of the.
So the teachers are, the educators are in the theaters, like there's.
And then specifically the K four, we plan a very slow roll up throughout the year. Have that in our implication play, I said, the teachers have the time to learn and what we do, what we plan for it. As as we are involved to make the plan.
I think I think that is a piece of pretty focused here, being very humble about that. Being very thoughtful about how we funding that, how what we, I haven't made sure that teachers, educators are comfortable. Because I did, I do, I do share the same same concern, like always, it's all going to figure out how to start that, but it's been a terrible problem. Already in anticipation of moving forward. So I I mean, I feel pretty comfortable about it.
Why is so easy that couple of dollars? And I I appreciate the work both Julie and Julie with the entire administration student. Really wasn't that far in the near that what we were hearing was a new initiative, a new initiative was being thrown at our educators. And and they were being asked to roll out multiple new things in a one to two year period. But it sounds like this has been very well thought out. Everybody's on board and that is no longer happening.
And sometimes, sometimes people feel that way. Because I know, you know, I mean, I'm kind of into the game and I know obviously so, you know, with Witten Wisdom and like Wayfinder. Yeah, it feels new and different. And that's always been a lot of new things kind of feeling like I got to send them in the thing. So 100%, you're right. I think when you're playful and discussing and meeting in teams and having the conversations and making sure that where educators are feeling like it's too much and not enough or it's not really being addressed, so it's comfortable again with the students.
It feels very thoughtful.
Yeah, I'm very, I'm very impressed.
Truest process of uncovering holes and gaps that educators are wanting to fill. It's just been a lot of excitement.
For our next slide. I see Brian's next to the pause, but.
So when we rolled out FOS years ago, we combined, we had Brown and Glover each meet because they were the only schools that had the same program. I think the same thing here. Great.
Yep, they have plans to that. Everyone's bought into straight. Our budgets do.
Yeah. So in our budget for our 26 budgets, it was approved, we did make an infusion for curriculum, which we tend to keep in the budget so that every year we can refresh on a five or six or seven year cycle, depending on the subject.
So this adds up just about.
Target possibly.
So what happens, I think, I'm sorry, I mean, like what happens is we do a curriculum refresh, like some curriculums more costly, you know, there's some, you know, when there's consumables and stuff. I mean, obviously, that's something we have to pay attention to, make sure that we have a funding there. I think we did a plan, plan for that. Those monies aside, so as we go forward, we'll have funding there in place, so as we get a lot, you know, we have a funding.
It's just really important that our last one, yeah, very well. I want to be clear, we're asking these questions not because we think you guys aren't planning this. But to be perfectly honest, this hasn't been planned out in the past, and we have bought a new curriculum that we can find consumables. Or we bought too many curriculum in the same year, not given our our staff that's buying and trying to get up on the wrong way of doing it. So we're asking these questions after, so we don't have faith, but just so the community knows, this has been very intentional. This is well thought out, and we can actually fund all of this of a new curriculum that we're not running down the hall over the science committee.
And we heard that. We heard what you said here in this process.
You can be all.
Yes, and thank you. Thank you, Angie.
I was stealing it from her.
Very mindful of that. So my responsibility when purchasing a curriculum is to get us the best price possible. That all those steps are not happening. These are very much estimates right now. Some of them are just following the webs. If you haven't been watching, if you haven't done all that, this is a big step in the process. We want to be respectful of that process. So we know the money that's set aside, that will be will be within budget anyways are. And we will also be mindful of when, I'm sorry, when the online expires and complaining so that students don't have those feelings. Those are very real things that I'm going to be very mindful of that, which I just want to say, we already are doing. So for example, we had purchases. Then you have the math curriculum and with Witten Wisdom, that part of the teaching learning budget cycle applies that we are in. Then those updated purchases each year in our, in our right. So back to Sarah's point before, really do this. I'm going to turn over to Emily, but there was that excitement and it is very exciting.
So yeah, so where we're going to end for today is just to remind everyone, this was a theater 12 curriculum review process. And we had representation of teachers throughout all the grade levels or within all the schools. And basically, we at first it was like, okay, here we go, we're getting going with this. And then after about maybe four meters or so, people looked forward to coming. People were excited to kind of, you kind of learn more about the topic that you're passionate about with columns. And it it became something that people kind of like, you know, got excited and wanted to show their team, look what we might get to do. And we're very excited about. So our ending meeting, we had some talking points that the committee came up with, and these were some of them. So we felt like educators were excited about this. The future of science in Marblehead looks bright. We are enjoying the opportunity to explore comprehensive, engaging, and standards-lined materials. We are finding materials that are accessible for all learners. I appreciate the curriculum review team for our conversations and bringing it back to teams. And we are reinvigorating science in our gesture. So these were just some quotes from our team members. Their next one.
We want to say thank you to David Adja, Johnny Callahan, Caitlin Fields, Angie Resiano, who were saying give him. Danielle Mosher, Emily Perez, Jenna Rowe, Deserino, and Gannon Zalnaski. That was our committee. So grateful for the time and the dedication and their expertise. And also the work that they did as representatives to go back to their teams, their departments, the grade levels. And so really grateful for that. So just want to thank Emily and Angie for their structural vision and definitions in this process and thinking we're considering about.
I've said this before, I know we want to bring them, but I have a student who's in graduate school, getting a PhD in biochemistry. But for, it's just I don't know, it's been a squiggle or something. There's no question that we have an unbelievably talented. But yeah, goes back certainly to graduate school, almost. Unbelievably talented. Educators. And this is real stuff. You know, it's just science, it's English, but you know, our teachers launching. Sure. Scientists and teachers and, you know, doctors and whatever else. And this is, you know, hopefully giving them the tools for all things they need to be able to do. So it's, you know.
The high school level, there are lab components. I know currently we don't have lab blocks. I can't say it enough times that I think it's so important in the field of science to get for us to work towards getting to a point where we have structured, more structured lab blocks. So.
Exactly. Very good.
And if you can just know whether or not this curriculum has that and just high level. If there is a plan to implement that more because one concern with getting rid of those is we do have so many wonderful teachers in the field of science, getting our kids excited about that. We're sending them off to university with not not equal with their peers with their labs, stills going into lab programs because we don't have a lab block.
Lab not has changed. We do have labs. Students are engaging in labs and lab learning and hands-on learning. All the curriculum that we selected has that online component that students can also go home and review videos of the labs as well. Not every given, but mostly.
I mean, that's that real world labs or?
No, it it, but there's two different components. The lab is happening in the class. There are labs happening. There is also.
Yeah, I'll get literally finished, then I'll get to Al.
Some more time to do something, or maybe they're going home and completing the assignment that accompanies the lab. They can go back and do it again. Not if you want to get something on the first time through. So it's just a big show component to that. One thing I've heard from our school science teachers was that there was a shift a few years ago, perhaps due to the crisis, that they they needed some more additional support, we'll say, up labs. Because some of those labs are intended. We listened. We've developed a really effective plan to support them in that. We're working with Dr. Carlson to ensure that we have the support staff. But they, we have a really great plan to make sure that the science educators have someone that will assist them, especially on those those labs that take some time, put the chemicals and stuff to set up. So that was one of the things that they wanted, we want some more and.
Going to some of the good things that can add is the the reading processes here in the teachers and them having a space to reflect what they're able to do, what their blocks are.
Al.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, the I know we've, we've had some challenges with high school graduation and showing competencies without the MKS requirement anymore. Does the high school curriculum or does any of the materials provided potentially help with that, getting us in line with maybe the DSC guidelines going forward?
So I hear your question of like, how proficient are our students in science as a graduate from high school?
Right, but right, there'll be certain that we need to show those, right, those capacity, right, in order for them to graduate in science in this particular case, right?
Yes.
Amongst other subjects.
Yes, Al, that's a great question. So our our graduation requirement is second passing grade for our science classes. We have vast majority of all of our students that are passing our science classes. The curriculum is aligned to the Massachusetts standards as well as a crosswalk, so to speak, of the national next generation of science standards as well. So there's a national alignment as well as Massachusetts. One thing that we identified was with biology, they felt that the online component that we would be able to add by adding the by purchasing your scent would really help support learners that needed to read the material again or clear the material. When they got home, you know, the tech, they just have the now you can text book, to be honest, right? But this has been bringing a whole nother level of support for all learners. So students were very excited to do that. Now, one of the values that we set forth is that we wanted our curriculum that would support all of our learners. So very excited about that. With the competency determination and leadership, we can talk more about that, Al, as well of how we'll be looking at that. And we'll be discussing that in the meeting in terms of bio biology.
Thank you.
So I was just, I was just trying to mention about the lab. So I've been in the high school, we went and seen how the lab was worked out. And we don't have a lot, but when it was, you were here for. For me, but we talked this specifically, we said, how how the labs go. We we had those conversations. And they said, that's like the four minutes away, but if it's a lab and, you know, the material is next time we, sometimes a lab goes, you know, two periods. And they felt that that was actually good because it gave them the ability to say, you know, the shared material, you have time to reflect on the material, come back, continue lab. And quite frankly, the couple of kids I talked to, like, yeah, it's actually, you know, so it was a two hour long, whatever block was nine, five minutes. They told me sometimes I was like, I lost track of it. So I think the way they've addressed it without the lab block has been helpful. So it's, you know, it's it's not the same, but I think.
And this is one thing I'm going to push back on because, you know, sitting in even teacher presentation at parents' night, the teachers are letting the parents know they're not, they don't have the time in their schedule to teach labs the way they used to and to the level that they feel is appropriate. That they do, you know, biology, they might do four labs, things like that. Versus where we were, this this pretty is all of you guys, where we were was where they really had a formalized lab block before we did the scheduling shift. Where these kids were learning on a regular basis, not just how to write a lab, the process of it, but but it was a teaching one. It was it was very impactful. It was a teaching one. It it was it was very impactful. And. We are hearing. You know, both from our students that go off into lab science based. Degree programs that they are not as prepared for that portion of it as their peers. And and I will, I'll tell you, I sat I've sat through here and it's like where I've heard from the educators who have said, we wish we had the schedule in time to do more. That's a thing you wanted to do. So.
Well, like we really like just.
So I was just saying, data collection is really important for us. And I talked about this several times. Use data to inform decisions, right? Um what you're bringing up is something that is a point that we will have to examine further. That was not a loud cry from our science educators when we were in this process. What I'd like to do was just a data collection on that. What it was, again, as mentioned, it was before my time here in assault. What it was, what's the difference? And then also now implementing the new curriculum, what are the impacts of that? So let's do something I would recommend is a data collection on that. Then I'd come back and report to the committee. Um once we get a little bit into the school year and see how they plan, um and I would be very happy to share everything. We know how important hands-on learning is, right? Those are the moments that sometimes we step with our students that um being able to connect um instruction. And experience um allow. So let me do some data collection team and I'm very happy to report back um after also consulting with those sites.
And you know that I understand schedules are extremely complex and they don't, can't be changed or amended on the dime. So.
So that just the lab tech.
The lab or the lab tech, but the labs themselves, we were not, it's not not a bunch of.
Yeah, what we heard was about the lab.
So I understand this is a long term issue, but since we're talking about science curriculum, we will be talking about it really again for six years.
That's right, it's appropriate time.
I hope we address that a lot. I know, but I hope we address it before six years.
So um any other comments?
We need a motion to approve. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the science curriculum. It was presented tonight for K three. Sarah, do a second.
Second.
Any questions, elaboration, discussion? And we call for both Brian Oder.
In favor.
In in K, does it have to be the motion of certain?
No, okay, no, okay, it listening, yeah, actually.
Um Alison Taylor.
In favor.
Uh Brian and Al Williams.
In favor.
Um I'm gonna call for a five minute process.
Frank, you just make sure the mics are off.
Um.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ross.
I still live. My calls back in session at.
I have three lives.
You know, for I'm gonna double check.
See.
I'm nervous.
You too.
Oh, no, it's still like. Were we live streaming in a minute? It's noted that turns like. Will you pause recording? Oh, that's. Okay, so thank you, everybody. We've got Al and sure, Aaron. Allison. Mr. And great.
Sure.
Twelve hours difference. Um, so he started all of us that I'll initiate it. Uh, okay, so many operating protocols. I put that back into the package. Um, I cannot make it the other side. The documents there. So I've got these wrapped operating protocols all in front of us again. For discussion and hopefully the option. My point be it's still. I think longer than it needs to be, however, a lot of work put into this. I would hope the committee would approve this and then maybe something there. People keep looking through the. The files at some point finding the version because that old version was just very nice. Um, maybe consider going to that. I go just so you know, we should want. I know we tried, uh, we've got in twenty seventeen and, um, first of all. Okay. My research. And I don't know. The word. There were minutes referencing that. Uh. But I appreciate the work that went into it. They have no problem approving these and just like I said, I'm getting a hold of the, the. Same version that kind of is. Do I have some voluntary dollars? Wow. First step. Can you hear? She make that the school does. Yes, fine.
It's not a rhetorical question.
Okay.
Point number three, slide seven.
Well, now that must be taken away. Um, okay. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to prove the school can use fully operated vertical. Um, it's by Sarah, about a second.
Second.
I am gonna ask for vote by her.
In favor.
Sarah Box, favor Allison Taylor.
In favor.
Al Williams. Oh, Al. Al, can you hear us? Oh. All right, well, yeah, I can't hear you because you're still new. Right now, but there you go. Al, are you in favor?
You suppose it's.
That's you. Al, are you in favor of the operating protocols?
Yes, in favor.
Thank you. Okay, fine. Thanks, everybody. Um, okay, so now we're moving on to the policies option. Um, I know this was a lot of information. Um, what you should have had if you have it. Was, um. A spreadsheet that showed the list of. Policies that we are looking to adopt. Um, there are two that we're looking to revise and one we're looking to. Um, so we could have had the adopted ones, we would have had the MASC version as well as our current version. We're asking in the adoption, we go by one. Um, that we are ready to adopt the MASC recommended version. And that will replace ours. And just so everyone knows, Allison and I worked at this cause of several meetings with, um, superintendent Dr. and supervisor. Where, um. Many of these, uh, adopted policies, um, of MASC have slight wording changes. Um, there actually are some that are actually different than ours, um, all of which are reflective of current statute. So MASC, they possess recommendations for updated policies that pertain specifically usually to state statute requires. Um. To reflect about the state law and sometimes that has changed or not, we have passed. So I'm thinking, uh, the best is to go one by one. I'll ask for motion in a second, then we can discuss. So I I just double checked that it was something earlier. I have the spreadsheet, but I don't have the in any attached. Of in the packing.
Yeah, just open it up a second time. The file only has one.
Okay, the file and then it's small, all. So we had all of them, they're. Back to the little guy. I saw.
I saw the ball on there.
Should we go back to the one Lisa shared? Go back to you.
Yeah, just went to the one Lisa here.
That's the job.
Yep, here.
Sit on today. The policies. A second. Okay, so I I only saw the memo about which ones cheaper. Especially. Why don't we go through your. Yeah, okay, so what I did is I labeled each one the marble head one. Okay, and then the MASC one. Okay, all right, so I'm going to ask Frank. To pull up the first policy, which is policy IMG. Should say MASC IMG. I'm developed. So this. Okay, so this gives maybe that favor or not. All right, all right. Uh, so this first one is policy IMG, which is titled Animals in School. You have an IMG in schools, which is quite a bit, uh, longer and it fits into the discussion of all sorts of things like wild animals. Permeating animals, bats, poisonous animals, et cetera. This one is, um, a little bit more concise and it just talks about, um. This around bringing animals into school, including, um, the education programs and references issues around students' health. Some students can be allergic. To an animal. Um, so there's just discussion around how that needs to work up to student has a potential health or accountability issue. So, um. This was something I had looked into quite a bit. Um, there was a great seminar at MASC, um, the year prior, probably was there this year as well. About, um, service animals, particularly therapy dogs. Um, and the positive impact that it has on students' behavior. So I'm gonna interrupt you there. The policy I M G A, we're gonna talk about that.
Okay.
Okay, so. All right, so I just wanted. I will bring that up there.
Karen.
Yes.
So, um, I just wanna not not to correct you, but this, this is the one that species service animals, because that first one is.
Yeah, I see service.
No animal.
All right, well, we're also doing.
Yeah, the other one, yeah, the other one's about all.
There's a large section on the nature of services. Yeah. So. At the time of this, they had talked about, um. Encouraging school committees to have. A policy in this may be, and then when we're talking about the second, that encourages and talks that. The use of these therapy. Animals, uh, so I would just, I know they're in use in some of our schools. I know some of our schools, um, are are a little. Sorry about that. But, um, is science based and I know that in times of crisis. We have. We like Nebula as Nebula because we're up in, um, and it. During those periods of crisis, the feedback we received from our administration. Was quite honestly, the service animals who were bringing them up for students and staff more than the animals. So I just wanna make sure our policy. Encourages in.
I think the. I mean.
Yeah.
I think the policy where there's no animals which are in the school top priority. The the principals kind of when that when that lives a little bit, I think, um. So without without being a center of course, that allows that allows the building principal to work with those agencies and and make sure that all the other things are followed as far as health and certain. So simply what happens is when, um. Service and you know, therapy animals, not sort of send those like therapy animals brought in, brought into a common area. There's a choice by the students, so we we avoid all that stuff. So, um, that's why we, the MASC policy is, uh, is loud. More succinct, but it allows for all the for all those areas, that's probably. Without thinking this one made more sense. And then when we go to their, um, policy that has talks about ser- service animals, et cetera, that's. Different. So, so I feel very comfortable that in our operational, that's still conversations that, you know, we'll have with the. How does that look, what does it look like, what's the process?
And then from an operational standpoint, I would encourage you, we worked so hard in the start of alignment. And, um, equitable experiences at all of our schools that I I believe almost all of our schools are are. Being advantage of this, um, from an equitable experience point of view, um. I would encourage you guys to first.
Yes, and if if you experienced that. Not that would just. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other, any other question? Okay, so I'm asking for a motion to approve, um, the adoption of previous case, um, updating twenty thirty three policy IMG Animals in School. There are no three readings for for. There's almost. Sarah, about the second.
Second.
But Al, I'm gonna. Five. So that. Sarah Box. Al Williams.
In favor.
Allison Taylor.
In favor.
In favor. Um, so the next policy is, uh, IMG A, Frank. Which is service animals in school, which that actually is. Super greater. That's. It's not specifically service animals. Not. Um, so this one also is an updated, um, policy. That talks about, um, service animals that are necessary for, um, students that have students that I perhaps that like. Anybody that would need service animal.
Yeah.
Yes, so. This, I mean, I was just, I've heard and and seen some wire. As far as what can be considered an emotional support animal, I think we all seem to. Um. If. Oh, no, they've not been in the. Can tell you about it. So. If if some, if an individual presents with that confrontation or. Or it will fall underneath his ear. And are.
Yes.
Does.
Um, and yeah, I mean, you, I don't. There's a lot of animals that kind of pop up there and, you know, I think it's, I don't remember all, but there's a lot of why I really got passed on how. A lot of people want this for and, you know. You know, in regards to our students. That require services and like, so you have a form that here.
And it does say, you know, the group committee does not permit discrimination against individuals with disabilities. Who knows from the various services. The district will comply with the truth of law, so in the rights of persons and values, this is the. And the federal law will make such animals on the premises very expensive. So this really, again, just to call of our policies. Is, um. Recognizing that there are state statutes and federal statutes and that's. So I'm asking for a motion to approve, um, the, uh, MASC, uh, policy I N G A. Adoption of service animals. Oh.
Second.
Second, Allison Taylor. And, um, let me tell her both Brian Oda.
In favor.
Karen Fox, Allison Taylor.
In favor.
Al Williams.
In favor.
Thank you. Okay, the next one, uh, Frank is C H A slash C H C. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I H B G homeschooling. See that, Frank? Um. So, yes, so the next, um. Policy that we're asking to the committee to consider, uh, an upgrade, uh. Adopting the MASC version is around homeschooling. Most of the items I believe are the same, Jonathan, if I'm not mistaken, the exception of. Um, our existing policy says that we may award a high school development to homeschool students and that is not actually the case.
That's that's the that's the main difference, yes.
Same difference, yes, the MASC version, which is in line with state statute, is does not recognize or speak to. These are just the rules around this. Uh, which are state laws.
Just if someone asks that question, homeschooling, making access to our extracurricular activities, et cetera, that's a whole thing and you can't, you can't align with what our performance, what our standards are.
And there are some, uh, in this, which is the same as our existing policy, uh, which I think are, I know our state statute. Uh, there are some steps that that parents guardians have to take, uh, with in conjunction with school district. Uh, so I'm looking for a motion to, uh, approve the adoption of the MASC policy, I H B G homeschooling. So move. So move there, Sarah, second.
Okay.
Allison is. Okay, I think we'll go right out of. Sarah Box, favor Allison Taylor.
In favor.
Williams.
Al, in favor.
Ben Chaffey in favor. Karen, if. Is it possible to do a motion for all of these and it been to get hold the way we do it, so I mean, to grade certain ones out of the dossier?
So I think the other way can, I mean, you could send this every single one separately and then.
Yeah, the motion be each individual one.
It's it's.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, so the next one we are doing, um, uh, Frank is, um. C H A C H C. Which is this development and dissemination of procedures. This really talks about, thank you. Um, so this talks about, um. Procedures, uh, that will. You know, take place in the, um, the school district. Um, it doesn't reference yet looks, but to me, it's around issues around. That we're going to. Um, I think. If the only difference I see, first of all, we have is that, um. There's a paragraph that's being struck. A new version that would say, well, the responsibility is to attend to see the procedure. Any policies, when there's. And who does procedures and support means possible. So that is being deleted. Um, and we are adopting this current version of stuff. Um, so do I have? A motion to move C H A C H C development. Development.
So moved. Second.
Uh, Brian Oda. Sarah Fox, favor Allison Taylor.
Favor.
Williams.
In favor.
Sarah, okay, we're gonna move on to Frank to I H B T, which is animal toy. Station. With which references, um, title one. At a long farm, so we, uh. As a door. And the only difference, um, in the AFC version for stars is it references. Okay. Um, in the cross reference. Thanks. Uh, that's. Yeah, um.
Maybe a bit, by the way.
No, I don't mean like initially, like I I just know in some of our policies, we reference another policy that doesn't even exist, so that's. Do we wanna make sure that cross reference exists? Why don't we approve this and I'll go back afterwards? Okay. Um, so I'm asking for approval to, uh, adopt an AFC policy, I H B D, condensatory education. So moved there, the second.
Second.
Al, okay, Brian Oda.
In favor.
Sarah Fox, Allison Taylor.
In favor.
And Al Williams.
In favor.
Chapman, favor Sarah. The next one, um. Frank is I H V F, which is home bound instruction. Um. And the home bound instruction. Updated version, um, for MASC, uh, speaks to the length of time, right? It's it's when home bound instruction would. Student. Which is not this important days. Absolutely. Does this cross reference the law? So I thought. The law is less used in this. It's cumulative fourteen days, so we, uh, we don't call it home bound instruction, we call it. Okay. So this, this aligns the law. Okay. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve policy I H V F home bound instruction. So, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Brian Oda. Sarah Fox, favor Al Williams.
In favor.
Uh, Allison Taylor.
In favor.
The next one, uh.
Uh, Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
I just need to know, I need to leave, uh, for work related items, so just wanted you to know, thank you.
Issue of. Uh, okay, the next one, Frank, is I H H alternative school programs. And the MASC version of this versus marble meds, um. Our current policy, which this is being struck, um, says. Committee will provide alternative education programs for these states and then again, why we're established with such programs is feasible. Whether those programs follow the function of the municipality, the system. So that is no longer. Um. That's difference. So do I have a motion to approve I H B?
Hold on, our second.
Then, um, Brian Oda. Allison Taylor.
In favor.
Um, next one, uh, Frank is I J instructional materials. Sarah's points cross reference, um. Up there, everything else remains the same. And it cross references K E, which I know we have, and I G A, I G D, I G B, which I also. So there's a. Um, looking for approval, uh, motion to approve. And there's the updated policy I J for instructional materials, so move to the second. Okay, uh, Allison Taylor.
In favor.
Sarah Fox, favor. The next one, Frank, is I K A P. Student progress report to parents. And the difference with this one, I John, fingers are wrong, was me. Or talking about issuing a periodic. Valuation.
Yeah, so so basically this just, this just says, um. I believe the intent of the previous one was that when you said progress note, progress reports told current student to. Then I need to get a progress note, um, the progress order is actually. But they're not right. This verifies that. Okay, we got the MASC one, it verifies that, so it's a whole thing, so.
Looking for a motion to approve policy I K A. The most second.
Second.
Right, uh, Allison Taylor.
Favor.
Brian Oda.
In favor.
Sarah Fox, favor and chapter. Next one is policy I M B. Teaching about controversial issues and controversial. This, yeah. Yeah, this is just adding a cross reference, uh, cross reference. I J O E. Resource persons, which we do now. And so it's just added that cross reference and ask, uh, looking for a motion to approve policy I M B. The motion, second. Al question, oh, sure. Um, so my question just for a point of clarification for the community is who is the determining factor on what is a controversial issue? Because what we have kind of experienced over the last year to two years is some people feel. That issue A may not be controversial at all, while other people may feel that same issue is controversial. So who is the determining factor on what is a?
Generally, that would be a, uh, collaborative discussion at the school level of the teacher leaders and the principals. Um, and it's. Something. In all transparency, sometimes it's more reactive, proactive. Less.
And I do call attention to the degree of, I think. But the folks out there, um, to, you know, at some point, we do this because it is, you know, I think it's a pretty. Well written and comprehensive policy talks about, you know, um, for teacher plant discussions that controversial issues selected by teachers. Um, the class discussion must relate directly to the objective to content forces approved by the. For inclusion and curriculum. And the teacher's right to introduce controversial issues in classroom visitations does not provide that. Same, teacher must refrain from their positions to express partisan views of you. So there is some, you know.
So there's so so there's some meaning to that policy, and that's why I wanted to make sure that, um. It's written so that we absolutely kind of refer back to when you have a situation, make it follow the button.
And what that really does is memorializes in our policy. Mirroring state ethics, because state ethics are very rare, but if you've accessed to something because of your position, it would definitely be for a teacher who has access to the student. Because of your. Position. That you cannot use that position. To influence. Uh, and and I've always said state ethics carry more weight than many of the other rules that. Outrightly, I've heard, they were very strict. And there's serious sentiments, so I I I appreciate that this policy. Really just a little applies to the art. Um, thanks, okay, so I have the first and second, I'm doing a roll call, both, um, uh, Allison Taylor.
In favor.
I know that.
In favor.
Sarah Fox, favor. Uh, okay, just a couple more, um, policy I L, we actually are not voting on that, I apologize, I think that was. But I did just want to. For to the app, um, this is a policy review. Um, policy I L, which is entitled Evaluation of the Structural Programs, is a policy that we have here in regard of. Um, the MASC no longer has a set of polls. There's no longer also, but discussion with tenets, such as. Um, determinations that we would like to action. Um, so it talks about, says the school committee considers not to mention the objective evaluation of the effective risk of any primary importance. Superintendent will provide the organization of a stable structure to open the checklist for reasonable limitation of order two. And there's a listing of, you know, how this evaluation for. So we. The administration wanted to consider.
So the the reason that the in, um, the reason that. Have a fuller stretch is because we had indicated some minor changes. I get to. At the meeting, so I'll, we're gonna. So all that, that's me.
So we'll keep I L and. Be written.
Yeah, it's it was minus, but this.
Uh, same thing as I should be. Right, which is the student service program, I think there were a couple minor changes.
Yeah.
And you'll do that next time. Um, the following, two following items I did put in, to not actually get them updated, which we will do, um, at a future meeting. Are two parent, uh, two, um. You know, there's a parent consent for technology and then, um, student, you know, internet. Do I have to be in school, why I check to review it?
Yeah, and again, uh, I'll take the ownership of that, um, we 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 didn't get a chance to sit down and really go through. To to my level satisfaction, I guess. If we can bring that on the. Well, I think we feel better.
That's. And then the only other one that we are asking to delete is I H B. And then the only other one that we are asking to delete is I H B G dash R. Which was an additional homeschooling.
In the, it was related to our homeschooling. And it was provisions for our homeschooling, it was an addition to our homeschooling, we thought the M A S C wants to know.
So actually, I probably don't have.
Plus, just not, it's not a part of the list of that.
Okay, so I'm asking for that to be deleted, because we've adopted the M A S C version, which is. Okay, so I'm asking for a motion to delete policy I H B G dash R. In a second? Allison Taylor?
In favor.
Brian Oda?
In favor.
Sarah Fox, favorite. Yay, thank you, everybody. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the.
Mary.
The donation. Okay. I have two items to be approved for donations, because I can take the one, John, John?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a vote to accept, requesting, looking for a motion to vote to accept. A cash donation in the amount of six thousand dollars from the Massachusetts Marine Trades Association. So move it, Sarah, have a second?
Second.
Um, we have no sense.
I don't have a lot of information, to be honest with you, it was earmarked through the business office, and they asked to put on the thing, so. Try to come back with, so it was specifically earmarked.
I want to be specific for like.
Yeah, I'll find out and ensure that, you know, if it's earmarked for specifically, make sure that it's.
Awesome. Okay, open vote, Brian Oda? Sarah Fox? So moved, yeah, that was moved, but it's Sarah, oh, second, yeah, Allison. Allison Taylor?
In favor.
The next one I have is asking for those to accept a cash donation. The amount of one thousand eight hundred dollars sent to the Friends of the Robin Hood College. So what's? Second? Brian, and Brian Oda?
In favor.
Sarah Fox, in favor, Allison Taylor?
In favor.
Chef, forty zero, thank you. The next item on the agenda is I'm looking for a motion to allow the town of Harvard to give the Robin Hood School the wheelhouse. Pulling location on election day Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty five, for special election. The vote?
It's. Oh, July eighth, yeah.
And you buy Sarah, no, so.
Second.
Brian, any questions on this? This is the special election for. Or rec. For that, I don't know.
I know the consensus has a poll here, this one, I believe is all here, but.
Okay, I think they're waiting for our approval, which, in that motion, everybody would assume it isn't. Okay, and that is the second one, so we go with the second.
Yeah, if they, if they make enough, yeah.
That is fine, Brian Oda? Sarah Fox? Favor. Allison Taylor?
Favor.
She, she, in favor, where is your? Next item is pressed by Sarah Fox to rename the. Catherine Martin, we can't remember. So I'm just gonna read my memo, but I worked on everybody, but before I, I'll start. I'm deeply, deeply grateful for the name and the support of naming the organic garden at the Brown School at Matheran, Katie Martin, last fall, September nineteenth. As we know, Professor Jesse George tragically passed away in past January, plus nine months after. General Katie is a constant volunteer in our schools. He served at our facilities, keeps up with any woman, any other memory. That I, that comes to memory. Bringing the subject matter expertise in the area of facilities management. Tom, Beth Bond, and Paul Jeff, and asking for help. Jeff wrote the letter of interest to get that, but then Gary built the project by the M S B A. Remember it coming up several times at our local community meetings, that. That that letter of interest was noted by the board of the M S B A to have been one of the best letters of Smills' day. Most thorough, once they extinct. While the original Dallas Garden Organic Garden was the grandchild of Katie Martin's wife, which she's grown up. Jeff is at the forefront of performing the work to save the garden of reality. From driving the Bob fat to the earth. To helping transport the garden to Ellis, one very late summer evening, so that we could make sure that it's. To Ellis to start the transition for the building of the program they had a garden. Jeff works there. I'm asking the committee to amend the name of the Catherine R Martin Organic Garden to now be the Catherine R Martin Jeffrey St. George Organic Garden, Garden to honor the world. Katie and Jeff were a family of volunteers. They took their subject matter expertise, which wasn't landscape architecture and facilities management, and they volunteered hundreds, if not thousands of hours, hours, although many, many years. To the benefit of the students from Robin Hood. This is a way to honor them and to show that, bring their legacy in a solid way forward to the third girls, where our students. Have. A month, you can see how much their parents were appreciated, how much their parents do for our community. And how they, their memories alive, and I, I'm going to use a quote here, Katie used to use this all the time. Digital host from Audrey Hepburn, and I really think it emphasizes why Katie and Jeff volunteered in our district, and it was to plant a garden. This will be tomorrow, to save a little design, and they truly, truly believe in our, for our Harvard students, for our schools. They put their money where their mouth is, they, they spent countless hours to do so. We did receive a letter of support, if you mind if I read this. This is from Kristen Sally Pratt. She sent this to the committee, I am writing in full support of the proposal to rename the Catherine R Martin Organic Garden to the Catherine R Martin Jeffrey St. George Organic Garden. She let me know there's an A in there. My initial involvement with the project began in two thousand thirteen, helping to frontrise the original garden, but with vision and energy by Katie Martin and Jean Spelman. Later, the P T O board. Yeah, I, I was on the P T O board and chaired the organic garden committee. Throughout, Jeff was a steady, quiet presence behind the scenes, building the original garden dens by hand. Leveraging his facilities management expertise to secure and provide services at no cost to the town. Beyond the garden, Jeff served for years in the facility subcommittee, was the author and request to the M S B A that ultimately became the Very Beautiful Project. His attention to detail, commitment to quality were evident throughout. Katie and Jeff are partners in life and in service. And in their deep commitment to Marvelwood Schools. For naming the garden, both their names to be a thoughtful legacy developed together, if you're considering. I did include. Oh, she's so specific on the front. I did a picture, the original artwork that was associated with it, then Belle or Dennis Barton. Was very collaborative with our students, a local artist who's a parent in her school at the time. She owns a clay school, Kirsten, had worked, and there's, I can share some images, she had students in and helped sculpt the sign, and you see, it's, it's very much so. Age-appropriate to, to the age range that we're serving. I reached out to Kirsten, Vishon, this artist, and told her what the plan was, and if she would again be able to provide the service producing the sign. I realize it's not as formalized as a sign, but sometimes we see it as that, but I think it very much fits the spirit of the garden and of the youth and of Katie and Jeff. And Kirsten had, and I had asked if she could work with their girls, if the girls wanted to, to. Help make some, and actually, I got to talk to them last night, their oldest daughter, and she's excited about that, and she said she had wanted to come, but. Just, so she's not here tonight, but Eric, I was. Any questions or discussions, Allison? All right, so I'm going to have a motion to approve or rename or mandate the name of the Catherine R Martin Organic Garden, which she. Catherine R Martin Jeffrey. Same, same, Jeffrey St. George Organic Garden. So move, second? Second?
Second.
With Allison, Brian Oda?
In favor.
Sarah Fox?
In favor.
Allison Taylor?
In favor.
Chef, in favor. Okay. What's her favor, thanks for bringing that forward, Sarah, that's great, you'll let the. Absolutely.
Great.
Okay. Subcommittee, and we is on. This is the last meeting, I'm going to have a quick update, all subcommittee that made a turnip. The policies that we've submitted. We also discussed the recess policy, which superintendent Ferrera. You know, assistant superintendent Ferrera sent a survey out to the elementary, the. People who said. Right, yeah, right. And in our discussion, at this point. The recommendation, which will be forthcoming in, in the. Is that K three will go to recesses, and fourth grade is to be determined, or that will be in the recommendation?
No, we're.
Correct, okay.
We'll record.
So fourth, sixth, it's going to be one recess, I'm sorry, right? But a model, adding time on to the same. The joint data management J L M C still has to be two reviews.
Hey, Matt, today.
Okay, all right, so that we expect a recommendation before the end of this report?
Yes.
For.
Operationalizing, yes, sir.
Well, I say to recess, and then we want to be memorializing that in the new policy. Which we have.
I have my hand up too, sir.
Sorry, go ahead, sorry, Allison.
Um, it's only, it's only going to be, you're only suggesting to extend it for five minutes, right? I just want to be sure that's clear to folks as well for four to six. And Julie, you were going to share the data from the survey, I haven't seen that yet.
I'm very sorry, Allison, I will get to that. Reminded me, so thank you, Allison. We are looking at for village, it could be potentially more than five minutes, because we're looking at. Not embedding the transition time, but giving the students the full amount, so increasing the time, and then what would that be for transition time? Because sometimes they come from lunch, sometimes they're, so we have to look at that as well, so.
So right now, it's thirty to thirty minutes.
It's twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, we're recommending.
So we're looking at if we could get thirty minutes, and how that would. With the schedule, no matter what, it will be an increase, yeah, twenty minutes, but what does that look like in terms of, is it some grades, you know, transition time?
And then I also think, Allison, if you agree that the survey results, those in the back of the chair then. Or we'll get them posted online, the survey results.
I, I hadn't asked them for, I had just asked them for the policy subcommittee meeting, and I wasn't, whether they can be shared for everyone, that's. Fine.
No, I think we put it in the minutes for the.
I'd be happy to share, I think, kind of two levels, so the one that I shared publicly with the fly show, I'd be very happy to share that with you. And then as well, I think this is Allison was looking for a little more of the breakdown of, of the raw data, which I'd be happy to share, just as a collaborative.
I just, my concern continues to be the contract, because our contract does hold us to the second morning recess at the elementary level. The elementary level is defined as K through six. I want to be cautious that we're creating a policy that memorializes not complying with the contract. So if we, I just want to finish, so if we need to amend the contract, that is something. I just want to make sure we're, we're not memorializing something that can become, quite honestly, openly checked, reasons some and some wish it to be. That if there's any, i- i- if. We did ask multiple times if there was anything we needed to amend in the contract, our provision, and recess was a constant talking point with the contracts. If we need to amend the contract to reflect this, we need to have that talking point, because it is a concern that we're memorializing a policy that directly contradicts, this is a violation.
In the way that I'm doing, it does state to, to allow for recess, you know, of the elementary. So there's the, some language there, and then, and what you're asking, you just say elementary, it doesn't define, it doesn't define those, so. I hear what you're saying on that, I just, we've been working off of what the M O A, that's the most recent document.
The signed contract supersedes the M O A, and the signed contract embeds, embeds language. Of this, the, the morning recess, the M O A is just to carry you until the contract is ratified and signed, so then it kind of disappears. So our current ratified contract does provide for a second morning recess at elementary, which again is defined as K through.
Well, the attorneys have been.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, we're trying, we're trying to, trying to batch those two things, I think, you know, and. The M O A that's in place speaks to the five-minute piece in the whole, like, um, I've had further conversations. Is there any to say this today, so I'll have further conversations about part of the contract, just to make sure. That's, so.
Maybe they can sign an M O A, say they're relinquishing from the contractual right to morning recess for. And maybe that is, I don't know, I just want to make sure from a legal standpoint.
I'll, I'll. Thank you for pointing that out.
That was, did I just say, Allison, anything? Good policy? Okay, any other updates, Diane? Good, any new business? All right, we have two items that correspond, so I want to read these to the record. These were two letters that were sent to this Harvard School Committee. First was about the defamation leaving England, it was dated May twentieth. This came to individual members, I'm going to be, this one will be me, but to other members of the team, but I hope this message finds you well. I write to you on behalf of the defamation leaving England since our founding in nineteen thirteen, A E L has been dedicated to stopping defamation of Jewish people and securing justice and fair treatment for all. Today, we remain one of the world's leading anti-hate organizations, steadfast, hard issue to combat, and dissent with all forms of bias, striving for justice and peace of society. They're deeply grateful for your support, support the resolutions of the government, and their strategic efforts, which is a key consideration. Since their publication, A E L consistently advocated for the removal of these harmful resources, your vote is a powerful affirmation. To keep educational environments free from discrimination and to ensuring that Jews do not face a welcome in their classrooms. As you may know, the recent shooting in the Capitol Jewish Museum has once again shaped in a sense of superiority among Jewish communities nationwide. Santa Christina espoused extreme anti-Semitic activities in Oakland. We are raving and concerned about the dangerous rhetoric conveyed from various theological, ideological. Rhetoric and orthodox desires, cycling the world violence. When educational institutions disseminate materials that demonize and demonize Jewish, which is where the police, that's a way to spark a debate, poses a real threat to our visibility. In this challenging time, related to censorship, and the loss of a loose sense of security, it goes with the children's background. Their leadership provides much needed assistance, will take the stand in the corner that spurs information and demonstrates the true ally it should looks like. Thank you for your continued, continued leadership to protect our classrooms, to defend the good way we want. We also received to the, to the members of the Harvard School Committee, yesterday, June fourth, a letter from the committee for, after receiving little piece reporting analysis, known as camera. On behalf of Kira, I want to express our gratitude for your recent vote coming into some of the teaching materials. This should affect the barrier and that global law, barring that is, we need to today's integration was a great response. Typical support. At a timely and satisfactory, wise, male, long, and major resolution sends a vital message. That our students must remain places of respect and integrity. In tackle Washington DC, where Israeli men suspected murder in the Capitol Jewish Museum, and recently self, over the. The Jewish flagship and release of Israeli hostages were set on fire, authorifying findings of where, and checked, including inflammatory, ideological. By standing up against interference, to insert, sort of such an effort, often disguised as education to classrooms who are helpful to students. Go carefully, making a conservative values, that we very strongly. Cameron has long worked to expose these dangerous trends and support behaviors that are worst when confronted. The employer to fire, and we, we, we're doing the right thing, often invites a pushback. Just know you're not alone, the issue is inspiring and was organized in a sense. If you may be of any support, if you continue to address these issues, and we want to assist, with also sincere appreciation, earn shorts, camera signal. And I did just want to state also, correct, but I know this has been a whole discussion, but we did, you always write bases, but all five of the members were. That's it, first time. So I, if you'd like to join us.